Did you start the broadcast?
Yes.
We have no audio.
So, John, I'm hearing that everybody doesn't have audio.
I am here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
The ASL interpreter nodding. I believe we are good to go.
Okay, so Rabbi Simon, we're ready for the invocation.
Good evening and thank you for inviting me to share this prayer with you. And happy anniversary to Mayor Grant and Gemma. Almighty God, Master of the universe, we ask your blessings for our city, for its government, for its leaders and advisors, and for all who exercise just and rightful authority. May they administer all affairs of this city fairly, so that peace and security, happiness and prosperity, justice and equality may forever abide in our midst. Almighty God bless our mayor, our commission members, and all those assembled here with good health. Guide their deliberations, that they may govern this great city with insight, understanding, compassion, civility, and fellowship. May they constantly realize that in laboring for the enactment of just laws and policies to the benefit of our city, they are bringing honor to your name and blessing to humankind. Grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, and confidence in what is good and fitting. May they come to their work with a vision of a stronger and a better Boynton Beach. May they always have the strength to lead our community toward that vision by their words, decisions, and actions. And may they have the strength to rightly and justly lead, even if their leadership sometimes makes others unhappy. To be leaders is a task to which you were all called. And we pray you have the wisdom, courage, and strength to do that. And let us say amen.
Amen.
Special Legion.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Catherine, do we have the most recent revised agenda? Okay, thank you. I would like to add an item under 5D regarding my upcoming trip to Washington DC and discuss with the commission about that.
Mayor, I would also like to add a proclamation. I'm not sure if that was shared from Digital Vibes and their Jamathon. I requested for that to be added to the agenda.
Let me make sure I got it. I don't think I have the proclamation in front of me. However, I can read it and then. Crystal?
I have a hard time.
Okay, so we will, we will read the proclamation today and I will sign it for tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
And I'll put that as item 3E. Is there anything else? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve as amended.
We'll move.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Informational items by the city commissioners. Commissioner Ramus, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have any items to disclose today.
Commissioner Pensurga.
Thank you, Mayor. No items to disclose at this time.
And Vice Mayor?
Just like to mention that I did have the opportunity again to work with Feeding South Florida on this Saturday morning, which was at a very large crowd. Also like to say best of luck to Darryl at his new position, Brother Ramulus. Byron Wright. He'll do well. He'll do well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay. As for myself, on July 7th, I attended Storytime over at our library. I encouraged more people to go to do that. And on the July 8th, I attended the launching of the Lord's Place to their, their new temporary location as they received a grant to help build their facility in West Palm Beach. In addition, on July 15th, I attended the TPA. And I'm very excited that we have in our list of priority projects, separated bike lanes. This is something that I feel is extremely important for us as a regional player to make sure that our residents and consumers are able to get around on a bicycle throughout our 16 square miles. That afternoon, I did a tour of Hunter's Run for their, their new facility that they have with the resort-style pool. And excited to hear the, the future developments that they have. On the 16th, I went up to Orlando with the Town of Jupiter's Commissioner Alon Koffer, to, you know, carpool. And I was there on behalf of the city for the Land Use and Economic Development Committee. And one of the items that I put forth, economic development funding from the state legislature, was chosen as the lead policy issue for the upcoming state legislature session. So I've put in touch our economic development coordinator with Delray Beach's developed economic development coordinator and David Cruz from the Florida League of Cities to help draft the, the policy statement for the, the state.
And that's a wonderful call. Good job. Thank you.
On the 17th, I attended Rock the Block with our CRA. They did a great job. On the 18th, I attended Troy's 25th anniversary. And.
Did you bring us some barbecue?
Samples.
You know, that's the thing is that they're open seven days a week now. So, you know, that was the one thing that Anthony said is like, you know, I got three food trucks, you know, and bought some food for the, the community to give back. But you don't get Troy's for free. I'm sorry. On the 19th, I spoke with someone regarding our dive tourism and was fortunate enough to meet with the US Secretary of Labor, Labor Marty Walsh, at the City of West Palm Beach with Congresswoman Lois Frankel. This morning, I went to the Al Amin Center for Eid al-Ahhar, the Feast of Sacrifice. And those are my disclosures. Oh, and I spoke with Constance Scott right before, so I want to disclose that as well. This is it? Okay. All right. If there is no further disclosures, we will move on to announcements. 3A State Representative Emily Slossberg provided an update on the 2021 Florida Legislative Session.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Emily Slossberg. I represent House District 91, which is Delray, Boynton Beach, and Boca Raton. It runs from Boynton Beach Boulevard all the way down to 18th Street, mostly west of the Turnpike as you head north, a little bit east and into Boynton around the Congress area. Thank you for having me, Mayor and Commissioners. I was elected first in 2016. And going on to my sixth term, this session was very, very different, very difficult. We did, we were dealing with COVID. And up in Tallahassee, the building was closed to the public. We didn't have Palm Beach County Day. So we didn't have you guys come and talk to us about our priorities like usual. And it was just was a very different atmosphere up in Tallahassee. It, everything was done virtual, except in our committee meetings, we did have a public, we did actually allow public testimony while the Senate itself, they had public testimony from the Civic Center. So there was no, no public testimony actually in person. So it was a little bit different from the House to the Senate. We did manage to pass a $101 billion budget. A lot of it came from the American Rescue Plan from Joe Biden. And I did manage to pass some really good legislation. I'm also the co-chair of the Women's Legislative Pockets. And as a priority, I passed House Bill 673 called Gail's Law. And Gail is a resident of Orlando. She was brutally and viciously sexually assaulted. And she consented and, and gave her forensic evidence in a rape kit. And she sat, her rape kit sat on a shelf for over 30 years untested. And she didn't know, she never heard anything until last year. They contacted her and after 30 years of not knowing anything, it turned out her attacker had been a serial rapist and he had been incarcerated for the last decade. And for the last decade, she had been looking out her window every night, afraid to walk the streets, not knowing if he was coming back for her. And so what House Bill 673 does is it requires Florida Department of Law Enforcement to create and maintain a statewide database tracking sexual assault kits and give victims the opportunity to track their kits throughout the process. So if this would, if, yeah, it, it really is phenomenal. And this will go a long way to putting some of that power back into the victim's hands. And Gail came up to Tallahassee. Every committee stopped and testified in support and was phenomenal and a true champion of this legislation. So it really was a big victory. Another piece of legislation that benefits survivors of sexual assault was another piece of legislation that was passed by Representative Davis and Randy Fine. It requires sexual assault response teams in every county throughout the state. We have one in Palm Beach County, but other counties do not. And it also requires trauma-informed training to law enforcement officers. So it was also another big win for survivors of sexual assault. Another piece of legislation that passed was renew, automatic renewal of the homestead exemption for low-income seniors. Previously, they would have to fill out forms every year to get this homestead exemption. Now they only have to fill it out once. I'd like to thank property appraiser Dorothy Jax for being instrumental in this legislation. It really is, it was sponsored by Representative Marie Woodson and Senator Tina Pulsey. So they did an excellent job getting that through. Some, as Mayor Grant mentioned, we did just pass the bicycle and pedestrian safety legislation, kind of outlining bike lanes and when you can ride two abreast and when you can ride single file. Hopefully, you know, we can do something because we really have a problem on our roadways with pedestrian and bicyclist fatalities in, in our state. And hopefully we could do, go back and do more next legislative session. I did file legislation that would make it hands-free. It's only hands-free in school zones and active construction zones, while texting while driving is a primary defense throughout the state. You can still hold your phone to your ear and drive unless you're in an active construction zone or in a school's, school zone. So we'll see what, how, what the appetite is this coming session from the legislature and to see if they're interested in possibly going to the, the next step, taking Florida to hands-free. Some of the bad bills that passed this session, there were a few. Senate Bill 90, which restricts accessibility to voting, it really, it was unnecessary. It, it requires Dropbox, like it, it restricts the hours that we could have drop boxes in front of our supervisor of elections. Prior, it was 24 hours. And now they have to be manned and they can only be out during the hours of voting, which makes it less accessible to voters, especially during COVID. Another provision in that bill, prior volunteers could return ballots for residents. It's really helpful for, especially when we have senior citizens. And now, under this legislation, volunteers can only return two ballots plus an immediate family member. So it, it really makes it more difficult to access, to make, for voters to access, for voting to be accessible. There's another prohibition on giving food and water to voters that are waiting in line at the polls. It, it, it's not really, it, it really necessary at all. And there was one last provision that requires third-party voter registration groups to warn voters that their vote, their voter registration may not be delivered before registration closes for the next election. So this discourages residents from signing up with third-party voter, voter groups. It really was an unnecessary bill. We had a lot of debate on the floor, especially from the Democrats, saying this is just a way of making voting less accessible, considering there were really no problems and no issues in our last election in the state of Florida. And then there was also a lot of preemption bills. We had a plethora of the state trying to preempt or tie the hands of the cities and the counties and local governments. A lot of the bills actually did not go all the way through. There were some, some preempted, preemption bills that passed regarding home-based businesses, restricting your ability to regulate home-based businesses. And those home-based businesses are defined as having two employees and, and you could have remote employees as well. And it, and we did add in an amendment to that bill that would require the, the, them to keep, to comply with zoning, the zoning in the, in the city. So that was, you know, a last-minute amendment, but there was some pretty bad preemption bills. Another preemption bill had to do with prohibiting a municipality or a county or a special district from enacting or enforcing a resolution, ordinance, rule, code, or policy, or take any action that restricts or prohibits the types of fuel sources or energy production which may be used, delivered, or supplied. And this was in response to a city who was, who had passed a resolution with the goal of having green energy or clean energy by a certain year. And this is, you know, this, I, I voted against all of the preemption bills in every time they came up. I mean, we're tying the hands of our, of our local governments. And so I'm fully supportive of the authority and the power that the cities and our local governments have. So these were some of the, of the bad bills that have, have gone through. We also went back for a special session and we passed legislation regarding the gaming compact. So in October 15th, we're going to expect to see online sports betting in the state and that's going to be operated by our Seminole Indian Tribe. And we're also going to see an expansion at the, at the Tribe of Craps. And we'll see a few additional, possibly Las Vegas-style casinos being built at the Seminole. So it will be interesting to see how that plays out. I, I think it was only a matter of time that, that they renegotiated the compact. And it really, it, it did get, it did get a majority of support. So Democrats and Republicans did line up behind the gaming compact and come together on it. We can expect to see next session, as we go back redistricting, we're redrawing the lines for our state and federal legislators. So we'll expect to see that based on the new census that, that came out. We should also expect our Speaker of the House sent out a memo saying that our pandemics and emergencies committee is going to not only focus on COVID, but they're going to start focusing in on the surfside collapse and to see what additional measures that the state can take to prevent something like that from happening again. And I expect that legislation will come out and it will be a floor for the state, not, not preempting what certain counties already have in place. So these are the things that we will be looking forward to for next session. Our committees weeks begin in September and session starts in January. And with that, I'd like again to say thank you for having me here.
Yeah, thank you. We really appreciate your, you know, yes, Vice Mayor.
Emily, that was very, very, very good report. I'm just curious as to what idiotic reasoning, well, let me rephrase that. Those who voted against giving someone water that stands in line to vote, other than the obvious reason, what was some of the rationale that they came up with? I'm just curious. What, what were they saying?
This bill, the premise of the bill was to strengthen the integrity of elections. And I don't, I don't see how this is strengthening the integrity of, of elections and, and saying just we're protecting the, the elections. It, it, yeah, it, it doesn't make sense.
I mean, so, and I know that currently it's 100 feet. Did they expand the, the 100 feet to more of a distance?
They, they, I believe they were trying to do that. It was going back and forth between the House and the Senate. And, and I'm, I, at the end, I don't, I, I just, it, it stayed the same distance.
Okay. But I remember when I first campaigning, it started raining. Could we, could someone hand out umbrellas?
No.
Can't hand out?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay, good to know. And I do have some issues for the upcoming.
There, there is an exception for employees of the supervisor of elections. They're allowed to hand out. So there was an exception for, for employees of the.
So I know that sovereign immunity is going to be an issue that severely affects the, the cities. The fact that the, our policy committee looked at it is that it's been 10 years since the, the cap has raised. So we are trying to limit the amount of money that is raised for sovereign immunity. We understand that the legislature might think that capping, you know, having the, the claims come back to them for amounts over 200,000 gets excessive. My suggestion would be is that you, you start it off low and then it, it creeps upwards, kind of like what they do for inflation or other things like that. I know that home-based businesses just got passed and so we will have to, to do some work regarding our parking ordinances for commercial locations, bathrooms, and do what we can so that nobody can just open up any type of business in a residential neighborhood that does not have an HOA or condo association. And I'm very happy to hear about Gail's Law. It kind of slipped through the cracks. And so I, this is the first time I'm hearing about it. And is there a way for, or the future, that the legislature can help get the funding for cold cases to make sure that if there is DNA, to get that retested as part of the system, as more and more DNAs being part included in the, to the system?
Absolutely. That's something that we, I can absolutely look into.
All right, thank you.
And as for the raising the cap, I know there was legislation that was filed by a certain state representative. It did, it might have passed out of one committee, but it, it didn't pass at the end, so.
I'm pretty sure it's coming back.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Pensurga.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Representative Slossberg, particularly for championing Gail's Law. The mayor, I've said my other question already, but I wanted to first just dive a little bit deeper. You know, this is a story that I've heard in many other places and it seems to be a recurring problem. Do we know why this keeps happening? Why is there a backlog of these rape kits? And relatedly, you know, what can the state do? And this is what the mayor touched on. For example, for the private industry, are just, there are not enough companies processing these kits? What's, what's the bottleneck in the process?
That is a great question. It, it really came down to resources. And I, I am happy to report that we did go back and clear the backlog. So the state of Florida no longer has a backlog, which is, which is really great news. And the only thing now is as, as, as that backlog was clearing out, it was really about notification. And so now there's a system in place. I, I've worked with FDLE and other partners and there, we have the system almost ready in place and they have, they have about a year to phase in compliance. So things are going in the right direction.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope. Just thank you for, I think, a really solid report. And, you know, one of the things I always say is it's very important to have women in office and representation because things like this get across the table and get done. And we allow a woman who got so much taken away from her to finally get some form of justice and to also bear the name of, of the law that will ultimately hopefully prevent a lot more women from never having to endure this for so long. So thank you for the work that you do. And as a fellow woman in government, I salute you.
Our next announcement is from Dorothy Jax, the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser, who will provide an update to the city commission.
Do you have a question?
No, you're right there.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you, especially in your beautiful new building. My first visit here, so I enjoyed the art exhibit outside, especially the one that played music and had the lights. That was great. There were some children playing under it when I arrived, so that was lovely to see. It's my pleasure to come and speak to you. I have, think I was here last year or the year before and gave you an update on, on the status of the city as, in its regards to the tax rule. I was going to do that again tonight. I have about six or seven slides. I did want to mention, first of all, Representative Slossberg mentioned how we work quite closely together. We have every, have done that every year, the Property Appraisers Association, just to help to promote legislation that's supportive of our residents. We also, on the, were able to move a bill that will be on the ballot, actually, in November 2022, that allows us to treat homes that remediate properties to avoid flooding as we do for properties that are repaired after a natural disaster, which allows us to add additional value to the property without the homeowner being impacted by higher taxes. So if they make an improvement to the property, that, that allows them to come out of a flood elevation that might prove later on to be, be a problem for them, they do not have to pay additional property taxes on that improvement. They still pay property tax, just on the same level that they were before. This bill's going to be on the, as I mentioned, on the ballot next November. And we'll be doing a lot more education about it. But it was another positive thing for especially our communities and the communities on the western side of the state as well. So let me get started, if I could, with my slides. I know, oh, they are up. Good. I'll look ahead. Just, let's go to the first slide. The first thing I have to show you are just some high-level figures of where Boynton Beach sits right now. You know, we work very closely with your city administration and provide these numbers to them in, in a sort of sequence every year, June and then July. Boynton Beach is closing in on $10 billion in market value, taxable value, just under $7 billion. The difference between those two numbers are homestead exemptions especially and the cap on homesteaded properties. Next, new construction, a very healthy $74 million this year. I'm going to talk a minute about that later. And a nice 5.2% increase. Just to give you a sense, the county went up 5.8%. Some of your neighbors to the south didn't go up 5% at all. Boynton, Delray and Boca both had percentages lower than that. I think that probably relates to affordability, which I'm going to talk about a little bit. which I'm going to talk about a little bit in Boynton Beach, which is healthy to your tax rule. Your total parcel count makes you third in the number of parcels in Palm Beach County after West Palm Beach and Boca Raton in that order. We can go to the next slide. The, this is a 10-year graph showing increases in values. I just like to show you this because of how steady it is. I think it says something about not just that, you know, you're showing increases year over year, all very healthy increases, but also that COVID didn't have a heavy impact on our tax rolls. So we were all expecting sort of the worst of the worst, especially this time last year, when we had not really seen yet the market starting to recover. But the second half of last year, when it came to COVID, was really much like their prior year. It just, the market perked back up and started moving forward and upward in that manner. The parts of the market that were affected, hotels, non-essential retail, some restaurants that weren't really able to adapt, and certainly entertainment are small. They're a small part of our overall market. And so Palm Beach County, I think, all in all, will look back at COVID as not really an economic crisis, but just a health crisis, certainly, a bad one, but something that hasn't impacted our tax roll too, too much. Next slide, please. This shows you a breakdown of how the value contributes in Boynton Beach. And I show this slide to a lot of municipalities and I'll tell you that the thing about yours is that none of the, although the blue portion of the pie is big, it's residential, it's not as big as it is in many cities. And that is a good sign. It's a sign of that you have a nice, a broad, diffuse market. You're not putting all your eggs in one basket, as it were. In some cities, the blue, the blue piece of the pie can be 70%. And, you know, you want it to have a light, a bit of a mix to it. And that yellow portion, which is commercial, is a nice mix. I will point out that the multifamily category, which is almost as high as the condo category, multifamily are apartments. So that is a large building or a small building where there's an owner and then there are tenants renting from the owner. We classify it as commercial, but we call it multifamily. But I think that's also interesting that you have as much multifamily, almost as much as you do condominium property. The next slide, please. Your new construction this year, not quite as high as it was in 2019. I think that was a big build year, a big addition of some major projects, but certainly a very healthy number when you look forward. I noted there that 52 million of the 74 were single-family homes and apartments. Again, apartments were some of the big winners last year. We had 11 new apartment projects across the county in the top 15 most valuable projects that came on the roll last year. It is seen, it seems to be the decade of the apartments. If you remember, prior to the Great Recession, it was all about condominiums, but that's gone by the wayside to some extent. You're still seeing condos being built, but they're much, this is much more about a rental economy now, which I think is just a sign also of sort of society as a whole. Next slide, please. This just is giving you the layout of the top 10 cities in Palm Beach County. And I put this up there because I wanted to show you that you have a really good standing as eighth out of our 39 cities. And again, I think that that points also to a couple of thoughts I have about affordability. Let's go to the next slide. I like to talk about affordability because I hear it talked about a lot. And I think it's worth, you know, breaking down the numbers to look at what is really, really at issue. And on this chart, you see from 2016 to 21, broken down by single-family condominiums and townhomes. And of course, the single-family number is pretty staggering. The 2021, the median sales price, now this is countywide, was $455,000. But then if you come down to condominiums, the number goes way down to 190,000 and townhomes 275,000. It gives you a sense that this affordability thing is really a single-family home problem more than a whole economy problem. I think that if you are looking for a starter home, the townhome and condo areas remain relatively affordable. And so, you know, it's, and I think the problem in the single-family market probably has to do with supply and inventory. It just simply is a very tightened market at the moment. And that's being played out everywhere. You cannot seem to put your hands on a single-family home for a reasonable price. So thus, the demand drives up the price. And I think as people, the supply side of it starts to open up, people start to be more open about transacting their property. They may, you know, that may calm down a little bit. So I thought I'd show you this next slide, which indicates the cities listed by affordability. And the ones on the, on the left side of this slide are above that median number. And the number on the right side, the people on the right side are below. And there is Boynton Beach, very healthily, healthily in the middle of the list on the right with a median sales price of 300,000. So I think that's very good. It says something about Boynton.
Dorothy, yes. Can you explain the one parcel count in town of South Palm Beach? What is that?
Well, this is, of course, sales that occurred last year. So that happens to be that the town of South Palm Beach only had one single-family sale, single-family home sale last year. It happened to be a $10 million single-family home sale. But, but yes.
So there are one house sold for more than all of our 699.
Hey, you know, it's a strange county we live in. But I will point out, of course, South Palm Beach is very heavily condominium. I mean, it's condo alley, if you know it, you know, you drive down through it. So there's not a lot of single-family homes there. But I did want to show you, because I think this is very interesting and I think that Boynton should be proud of the fact that you have affordable homes. It's one reason why your values continue to go up well because affordability drives people to the product. And then, you know, the product sells and it'll sell for a little bit more. But I do, I do think it's great. I think it's a good sign. And you'll see also there's other cities on that side, Palm Springs, Lake Worth Beach, of course, Lake Park, all just really great communities that will continue to provide an affordable option to our residents. So let me just show you the last slide, which is really about increases in the number of sales that are occurring. This is for Boynton Beach. This is basically that same slide, but broken just for Boynton Beach, as we saw two ago, 2016 through 2020, the number of sales of single-family homes and the change in those values. You can see that Boynton has gone up quite a bit since last year. But it's also, again, no question, last year was a good time to transact to property, especially if it was something that was affordable. And actually, with that, I'm going to stop. I know I can sometimes fill your heads with a lot of statistics. And as I always say to Lori, we have about every stat you can think of in our office and are always happy to provide them. It's an interesting, interesting job just for that reason. And I would, again, thank you so much for having me and I'd be happy if you have any questions to answer them.
So my quick question is regards to the multifamily. We saw some nine-digit deals in the city of Boynton Beach for multifamily. However, they're not appraised at nine digits. So can you please account for that? And what is the, what should we look for in the future?
So multifamily is valued as, as I mentioned, as commercial property. And commercial property, normally we use what's called an income approach to value. So we're going to look at what is the rent on those units? How many of them are occupied? That sort of thing, as of January 1st. We ask the owners and they normally provide them to us. And if they don't, we use a market kind of, let's look at comparables to that property and we'll use those for that one. We look at both occupancy and we look at what are the rental rates. It's rather like an office tower in a way. I know it sounds strange, but it's the same concept. An office tower, you're going to look at, okay, who, how many tenants do they have? How much square feet is taken up and how much is being paid? And that, so it's really the same approach with multifamilies. That's why you see one number and then another number once they, once we are valuing them. And we're going to set a value that is fair and is obviously also looking at comparable to the larger market, you know? And everything comes into play, as it does with others, location, you know, amenities, those sorts of things are going to be also thought about when we value it.
And so I guess the question is, is that we're relying on the multifamily properties to tell us how much they want to be, how much they're taxed based upon the income? So do you look at audited financial statements? Or is it just their statements that they provide you?
Well, we look at their statements, but if they seem completely out of the realm of reality, we won't necessarily use them. We may use another property similar that we can, we know we can use as a comparable to it.
Okay, so like the office spaces that have sold or industrial spaces, they are not appraised at their market rate? They're more appraised at their income rate if they are to be re-leased?
Yes, yes. It's much more about value in use than what they potentially are, what they, what they, what they said, okay, well, this is what we're going to be. You know, this is how much money we're going to bring, you know? It's, it's really much more about, well, what is it actually going to do? And it's also very important, the timing. So January 1st is when we have to set the values as of. So sometimes so much can change, especially on a new project. You know, they may, they may start leasing up in August. And, you know, by December, they've not gotten as far as they want to get. But we have to set our value as of January 1st. So now it's the next August, it's now, or it's even November when the bills go out. But we're still having to defend the value as it was on January 1st.
And I guess that's kind of where we want to make sure that the, they have the correct amount of, I guess, vacancy rate for January 1st, because if the building isn't built by December 31st, it is not taxed as improved value that whole following year.
Correct. And I do always like to point that out to municipalities that that January 1st date is very important. If you have a project that is telling you it's going to come in in November, you want it to come in in November because we are not going to, we are not permitted to pick it up, as we term it, meaning add it to the tax rule if it's not complete and usable on January 1st for its intended purpose. And that, that is the fact for everything from a single-family home to a massive office tower. If it's, and occasionally we see little games being played with a push over, over to the new year. But I always like to make sure everyone knows that at your, at your point because if it is, if it can be finished, it should be pushed to be finished so that we can add it to the roll.
Thank you. Anyone else from the commission?
Oh, this was very insightful. I would like to see what the median housing price is once we get to the end of the fiscal year.
Absolutely.
Go by the fiscal year or do we go by the calendar year?
We, we go by calendar year. So we'll know more in the spring of next year about what this year looked like. And we're watching it very closely. It's interesting because although transactions seem to be moving very well, things have slowed a little bit since the first quarter of the year. The second quarter wasn't quite so fast-moving as the first. So we're very curious what happens in the next two, you know, in the third and the fourth, to see what we will balance out. Because of course, we're going to look at the whole year, kind of take the whole thing and sort of get a flavor from it. And like last year, you know, we had a very strong first quarter. We had a very bad second quarter. We had an okay third quarter and then we had a very strong fourth quarter. So you sort of are playing this, okay, how do we, how do we balance that out? And where do we set our values? So, you know, it ended up with these pretty positive 5% and 6% increases.
Yeah, thank you.
By the way, all your homesteaded residents, which you have a lot, will only see an increase of 1.4%. That is the change in the CPI, which is what the cap is set at. So if you're homesteaded, your assessed value, the value you will pay tax on only goes up that 1.4%. So I don't want everyone here to think we're going up 5% this year. Everybody rest assured.
I'm glad you brought that up because that was actually going to be my next question. So thank you for answering it and preempting me. But the follow-up question I do have is, do you have any workshops or just open discussion forums that you're having with the community, kind of share what this means? Because I do know that a lot of people are concerned, especially with the value of their homes going up so significantly and them seeing their neighbors around them selling for God knows how much. They might be a little intimidated or worried not understanding what that valuation might be. They might be thinking that they're actually getting valued on the new value of their home rather than the actual CPI. So do you have any community outreach, things that you're doing like that to educate the public?
We do as much as we can, especially with our website, with our social media, just trying to get the word out about that, you know, if you're, if you're a full-time resident here and you haven't moved, everything should be relatively okay. Of course, the proposed tax notice, which we mail every year in August, will show them just that, which will be good. It will say, you know, that your value only went up X amount and your taxes are only going to go up, you know, a certain amount based on how you set your millages and everybody else as well, of course. And so they get that notice in August, which is well prior to November. And it gives them an opportunity also to, if they, their value on their home, they do feel is too high, they can, they can petition their value and they have an opportunity to object. And also certainly to have some time to sort of digest that before the bills come out November 1st, when it's final. Thank you very much. Thanks so much for having me.
Our next announcement is a proclamation recognizing commemorating the 31st anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. The proclamation will be accepted by Stephanie Soplop, Recreation Assessment Specialist and TED Good Enough ADA Coordinator Assistant. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, recognizing commemorating the 31st anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Whereas July 26, 2021 marks the first, 31st anniversary of the enactment of the Americans with Disability Act. Whereas prior to the enactment of the ADA, people with disabilities were often segregated, denied equality of opportunity based on fear, ignorance, prejudice, stereotypes and labels. And whereas the goals of the ADA include equality of opportunity, full participation, economic self-sufficiency and independent living. And whereas state and local governments and business recognize the public interest in extending civil rights protection to all people, including people with disabilities. And whereas 31 years after the enactment of the ADA, the law remains a crucial tool in addressing persistent discrimination, including failure to ensure competitive, integrated employment, provide meaningful opportunities to community-based services and supports and eliminate new barriers to equal opportunity such as inaccessible websites, online system, mobile apps and other forms of information and communication technology, algorithm bias and artificial intelligence, lack of access to the gig economy and responses to pandemics and other national emergencies, and ineffective or inadequate responses to pandemics and other state or national level emergencies. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, to hereby reaffirm that the city of Boynton Beach will continue to work toward full ADA compliance and encourage, support our community partners and business to do the same.
Great to see you in person.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Commission. Good evening. I'm Stephanie Soplop, Recreation and Assessment Specialist, here with Ted Goodenough, ADA Assistant Coordinator. We just want to thank you for signing this proclamation. I know it's signing, reading words and signing a paper, um, it's, it actually has meaning. I know that all of you, all of the commission, the mayor, city manager, assistant city managers really do have a commitment to inclusion and accessibility in Boynton Beach. So it's not just words on a paper, it really has true meaning. Um, I also, we also owe a debt of gratitude to the recently retired ADA Coordinator, Debbie Majors, who started inclusion here inside the City of Boynton Beach, um, bringing an inclusion support team who's very supportive to us. It's just spreading all throughout the city of Boynton Beach. We'd love to see it continue to spread. We're so happy that you've signed this proclamation and reaffirm your commitment. Um, one thing that Ted does is he sends emails, weekly emails called Terrific Tuesdays with Ted, to all of the city employees, um, to continue spreading inclusion and accessibility knowledge and, um, information to everyone. So I'm going to let Ted say a few words about that as well.
Thank you very much for having me, Mayor, Commissioners. At my feet, on my side, is Rosie, my guide dog. My name's Ted Goodenough. I am the Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator Assistant for the City Managers' Office of Boynton Beach, and that probably takes up all of my time. In 1972, I was told that, um, I was legally blind. There was a pause in the room, it was quiet. I finally said, is there a illegally blind? And, um, so anyway, uh, when the, when the law got signed in, uh, in 1990, I went to the company I was working for, not the City of Boynton Beach at that time, um, and told them about this brand-new act and that, um, there were some tax credits available to them. They came back two weeks later and said, you're not disabled. Seeing is, or not seeing is a disability. So now, um, many years later, 31 years later, I'm now changing people's lives by helping them to understand that this is a law, not just a suggestion or a guideline. Thank you again for letting me speak.
Stephanie's being a little humble because she is officially our interim ADA manager. So we, um, Debbie did us a tremendous service in prepping Stephanie, um, to, to step into her shoes, and she's doing an outstanding job, and we're working on making that permanent. But, uh, thank you for, for stepping up and doing an outstanding job for us. And Ted, we missed Rosie and you, so when are you coming back? Well, we, we miss you in the office.
Well, I can't wait till I have a neighbor so that I don't feel like I'm all alone.
Right.
So Lori, I know that we sent out our newsletter. Is it possible to put a link to Ted's emails so that more of the city gets to know about what he's doing for us?
Why not? Put all the links, yeah.
And so that way, you know, we have that database, so your, your, your audience is going to get a little bigger.
Yeah, we can archive each of the emails and then send them.
Yep.
Sure.
I do have an archive of all of them that I've done, which started, I believe, in March of 2020.
Did, I remember.
So, yeah.
Miss your jokes. Ted's been doing mostly remote work, um, but he's, he's coming in, I think, once every doing, once a week. I hate them, I miss them.
Yeah, and I was going to say, I've learned a lot from reading Ted's emails, so thank you, Ted. And I would also ask that Debbie Majors in the back stand up for an ovation, because last time when she was actually leaving, she was upstairs hiding behind the camera, so.
And her and Wally come by at least once a week because we told them, we have to see them and the, and the, and the pups.
Right.
I see Wally too. Hi, Wally. We love you and miss you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is to proclaim August 3rd, 2021 as National Night Out. Boynton Beach Police Sergeant Henry Deal will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 3rd, 2021 entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 38th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Boynton Beach to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the Boynton Beach Police Department plays a vital role in assisting the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Boynton Beach and is supporting National Night Out 2021 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the City of Boynton Beach be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Boynton Beach. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, to hereby call upon all citizens of the City of Boynton Beach to join the Boynton Beach Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 38th Annual National Night Out on August 3rd, 2021, and do proclaim Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021 as National Night Out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission, City Manager. I just want to say thank you for promoting the proclamation. Uh, it is on August 3rd, Tuesday, uh, between 5:00 and 8:00 PM at Barrier Free Park, 3111 South Congress Avenue. Come out, join Boynton Beach Police Department, um, for the National Night Out and have some fun with us. We're going to have some bounce houses, community, uh, events going on with the kids, and food trucks and other events coming out. So I don't want to spoil all the fun with everything we're going on, but come on out and enjoy, enjoy some, uh, fun with us on August 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's their set date, because I've asked them every year, and Commissioner Romulus and I were talking, we wish, it's always falls on our first commission meeting of the month, so it always, I had talked to the chief, I said, can't you change? He's like, no, that's, that's the National Night Out, so.
Well, maybe we can change it then. So maybe for next year.
Work the meeting around it?
Yeah.
It was, it was postponed two years ago for weather, weather-related, so it might change. But, uh, but yes, it is set for the National Night Out with the National Coalition, but yeah, unfortunately it is set by the National Coalition.
Thank you. And our last proclamation for, uh, Digital Vibes. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas the City of Boynton Beach takes special notice and acknowledges the exceptional service Digital Vibes has provided for more than 10 years to our citizens of highest potential, our children. And whereas the, in 2010, Digital Vibes was founded to reach out to understand, underserve youth in Palm Beach County by mentoring them through dance, fitness, technology, and the arts. And whereas Digital Vibes partners with local after-school sites, community-based organizations, and summer camp programs, serving thousands of children each year. And whereas Digital Vibes serves all children within and even beyond Palm Beach County. And whereas Digital Vibes has hosted events such as Let's Move PBC and programs such as wellness workshops and digital expressions where children can produce their music videos to express themselves. And whereas Digital Vibes is one of the largest summer camp programs in Palm Beach County. And whereas Digital Vibes has grown a following nationally and has a viral dance video on TikTok with over 42 million views, bringing national and international attention to Palm Beach County. And whereas Digital Vibes will host its largest ever, uh, largest event yet this year with music, dancing, a live performance by Natasha Beddingfield, and a competition where the winning organization will take home a cash prize. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the July 29th, 2021, as Kids Fit Jamathon 10th Anniversary Celebration, to be held at the South Florida Fairgrounds in the City of West Palm Beach, and urge all citizens to join me in congratulating and celebrating Digital Vibes on their 10th Kids Fit Jamathon anniversary. Do we have someone here to accept the proclamation?
All excepted on their behalf, Mayor. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I just, uh, you know, this is really exciting for, for me, um, this proclamation, as Will Romulus, no relation, we just have the same last name, um, but he is a local Palm Beach County native, and he started this nonprofit a decade ago, and his intention was to just help kids be healthier, to help kids get away from the screens and the computers, and to just get out and, and have fun and dance and, and do the things that they like to do, but bring some physicality into it. And to just see the growth that, um, his organization has been able to have and the impact that they've been able to have on our young kids. Um, and, you know, their, their TikTok video, TikTok, and for any of you who have no idea what that is, just Google it, but TikTok is an app, and they posted a video on TikTok a couple of months ago, and this video went viral. Over 42 million people saw it, and, um, it, it is just amazing. Um, and they actually caught the attention of the artist, Natasha Beddingfield. For anybody who doesn't know that name, if you've ever heard the song, "I got a pocket, got a pocket full of sunshine, I got a love and I know it's all mine, oh." Yeah, so you're welcome for that song being stuck in your head for the rest of the day. You're welcome. So she is actually going to be live in person here in Palm Beach County. Um, and, and, you know, that's the, the impact and the significance of just one little dance video on TikTok going viral. So she's going to be interacting with these young kids and teaching them, you know, special dance moves and all that good stuff, and this is happening right here in our backyard in West Palm Beach. So I invite you all, bring your kids, bring your gang kids, and, and come have some fun and get them away from the tablets and the screens. I know I will be getting my kids away from that too. So, thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. Now, if there's no further announcements, we will move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to a three-minute presentation. Please state your name and address before you begin.
Hi, my name is Dave Beasley. I live at 190 South Boulevard, uh, in Boynton. I'm here about the Building Department again. I was here before, and, uh, we had some discussion, but I, I didn't get any reply from that. I know as an attorney, Mr. Mayor, you, if you looked up an obscure law, you could have me arrested today. You can do that. We feel like the Building Department does that to us now. They're looking up obscure things that don't matter. If you did have me arrested today, I have recourse. I can go to court, I can file an appeal. If I'm getting this from the Building Department, I have no recourse. If they have misinterpreted a code, there's nothing I can do about that. I have an instance now that I have a detached cabana, a guest cabana, and I was told by Louis that we can't do that. I don't know why, I've done it before. There are quite a few of those in Hunter's Run. I have two in the Building Department, Delray, right now. I have one in Lantana, and I know we've done them in Boynton in the past. And a guest cabana is not considered a second residence on a single-family lot. And that's what my client was told. And Louis told me, that's it. I said, okay, I'll do a covered walkway to the cabana. No, you can't do that, it's got to be enclosed. Said, if I enclose it, it'll attach to the garage. No, you can't do that, it's got to attach to the house. I don't believe all that. I just don't believe that to be true. And I have no recourse. There's nothing I can do. I was told, file for a variance. I'm not going to get a variance, a variance is for hardship. There's no hardship. So I'm kind of out of luck on that. And the other thing is, uh, in Hunter's Run again, I, I have a client that applied for a shower pan permit. It took five weeks to get a shower pan permit. Today, I had a contractor call me, and in Hunter's Run again, there are bands around the windows on the apartment buildings out there. They, when they were built in the early 80s, I was there, they were wood bands around those. The wood has since rotted out, and as of the other day, they were putting stucco bands around the windows. And somebody stopped and said, you have to get a permit to do that, to put stucco bands around the window. So he comes to me to get a drawing for a band around the window. I think that's a little out there. I've got condos that took seven months to get a permit. I have a lady next door to where I live, she bought the condo, she wanted to renovate it and then move in. It took seven months to get a permit. She's making mortgage payments, seven months. I have another one in, uh, Inlet Harbor Club. In fact, it's Gene Moore's. Is that my three minutes?
That is your three minutes, and I'm sure you could go on.
I could go on forever.
Yeah, hopefully not forever. But, uh, this is something that I appreciate you coming here. Uh, I've heard this from numerous residents that we are changing our building department, and you know, there's, you know, whenever you're building a new road, you have to slow down for a little bit.
Sure.
However, the transparency, I think, is the most important, where if someone is waiting more than the, the six to eight weeks, it's, it becomes the, the problem.
I have a lot of those.
And so Lori, do we have, what are we doing regarding our backlog of permit applications?
Well, to come up, and he's prepared to talk about the, the implementation of our new system, I, I don't have that answer myself, but, uh, it's up and running and we're catching up.
Okay.
But I think, I mean, he can give you some statistics real quick.
All right. And so the, before Mr. Beasley leaves, can he have, um, contact information from someone or Adam?
We'd be happy to sit down with you and go through that and take a, take a look at it, absolutely. I'm unaware.
I have suggested to, to Mr. Mayor that a workshop meeting of some kind, I can bring contractors, I could bring 10, and sit down with the Building Department and figure that out.
We would love to.
We don't mind doing that.
Okay. See that man right behind you, and we'll get something set up.
Thank you.
And so, uh, we'll put on Future Agenda, uh, the status of that workshop, is that, I'll ask the commission at that time. Is there anyone else from the, yes, come on up. And if anyone else would like to speak, you can wait, uh, you know, behind the speaker. We don't have, uh, an order for people to speak, but I do appreciate the raising your hands.
Good evening. I'm a little nostalgic tonight because I used to play pool here and dance here. I grew up on Northwest Sixth Avenue, so if I want to give you a Boynton address, it was 204 Northwest Sixth Avenue. My mom worked for City Hall. My sister was the first female dog catcher. My dad worked at the post office. I went to Boynton Elementary, Boynton Junior High, and in my senior year, Seacrest High School became Atlantic. And that's when this lady and I became sisters. We're here for the celebration of the 50th anniversary of Atlantic High School. We're having a reunion October 29th, 30th, and 31st, and we would love a proclamation. We didn't even come here for that, but we would love a proclamation that it's the, the first class, we're considering ourselves first class, um, of Atlantic High School. It was not an easy year, believe me. Um, and our reunions are so much fun, and we have some information about our reunion that we would like to leave with you, and, um, maybe you could put it in your newsletter, and I'll let Ms. Deborah say a word.
Wow. I'm a Delray resident, and I told her we were the Boynton-Delray, uh, event this evening. We're the Bernice and Deborah event, so B and D. But we are extremely excited. Uh, we're co-chair people for the reunion, and the reunion is going to be in Delray. However, we're coming to Boynton on Sunday to go to Lakeside Christian Church for church service. Uh, we will be going to Atlantic High School on Friday night to, we will go into Atlantic High School on Friday night for a football game. We have a dinner and dance on Saturday, and then on Sunday, we will come to church. We also have a memorial service to honor our fallen classmates. And for those And for those of you that are too young to remember, back in 1971, we only had Atlantic High School. Most of the students from Boynton and Delray went to Atlantic. There were a few stragglers that went to Boca Raton High and went to Lake Worth High, but those folks are all represented still here in Delray. We've got people coming from around the country. We've got folk in Idaho and Iowa talking about coming to the reunion, but the majority of us are coming from Delray or Boynton, and I live in Delray, by the way, still. So we wanted to put it out there, we want you guys to come and see Mr. Mayor and one of your commissioners. We're inviting you to our dinner and dance at our expense on Saturday night, and we'll get that information for you. It's October 30th.
Christina's coming.
Oh, Christina's coming. Okay, but yeah, so that's why we're here, to talk about Atlantic High School's first graduating class.
Wonderful, and appreciate that. You know, I guess the Children's Schoolhouse Museum and our, the Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center, you know, we would be happy, well, let's put it this way, I would be happy to help provide a tour of what it is now, so that you guys can reminisce of what it used to be.
Okay.
Absolutely. Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to say, I grew up in Delray, and though I am not an alum of Atlantic High School, I did marching band for all of high school, and so, and that was Atlantic High School, which was my home school. I, we were the Eagles, we still are the Eagles.
We still are the Eagles.
Yes, and so I still feel in a way that I am a fellow Eagle along with you guys, even though I graduated from South Tech as a Bulldog. But, yeah, that sounds exciting, and I hope I can get to party along with you guys.
We are hoping that Denzel comes because I invited him.
Denzel Washington?
Well, we were the, that movie was about us, Remember the Titans. If you see that movie, that's what we went through. We had bomb scares, we had riots, we had, no one was happy about losing their school, but we made it. We came together mostly through our football, you know, we had a great, and they still do, Atlantic still has.
And I was the first African-American cheerleader at Seacrest in Atlantic High School. I can't do it.
She'll cheer if you cheer her on. Thank you for your time.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Just as a piece of history, the Eagles, the mascot for Atlantic, came from Carver High School.
Carver Middle School.
Because they kept the mascot for Carver, which I was a part of. And so I feel connected to you guys.
A lot of our committee members are from Carver. Wonderful people. Yeah? Great.
Good.
But I was at Seacrest, you have another Carver alumni here, and we kept the green and white for Seacrest, and we came up with Atlantic was the new version.
Amen.
And so, John, is there anyone online?
I think there was somebody still in the audience.
Yes, Mayor Grant, I have Annette Gray, who has raised her hand, and I have just unmuted her microphone.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Annette Gray, GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute. I would re- remiss if I didn't take a moment to say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you" to the city of Boynton Beach. Our Christmas in July for the homeless this weekend was amazing. It was moving, it was impactful, and City of Boynton Beach really saved the day because maybe about four days before the event, we lost our location, and if not for the great relationship and support I've had over the years, not just from your staff member, but from your leadership team, our event would not have happened. So Lori Valeri, you're amazing. Police chief, you're amazing. Fire chief, you're amazing. Staff, the marketing department, everybody pulled together and helped us to have this event, and I was exhausted from making it happen, but so fulfilled because one of the people we helped was a young man who hadn't had a shower in three months, and I'm still emotional about it because he came up and wanted to take a shower, and he took a shower, and then he wanted to take a picture because he felt he was clean enough to stand next to me now. And Commissioner Consada, thank you so much for sponsoring the mobile shower and laundry units. It was a community event, young, old, black and white, and I wanted everybody to know we made such an impact. Thank you.
And is there anyone else from the audience? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Parish. I live off of First Street and 12th Avenue, and my concern is the drivers that are running the stop signs in that neighborhood. About a month ago, a driver ran a stop sign, seven months pregnant, she teeped on another car, and her car ended in the front of my door. So, as of today, I asked Lori to give me something so I can represent this tonight. It's called H O T C, means hot seat, means C, actually, hot seat, meaning the house on the corner. All the houses on the corner that I did get a chance to go through today, and I think I got like 20 signatures as of today, are concerned about this because they see it all the time. I wasn't able to go through the whole neighborhood yet, but I am going to continue to do that. And they came out, I called the police department, it was another time we woke up and there was tracks through my grass. I thought it was vandalism.
I'm sorry.
I thought it was vandalism.
Hold on one second.
Our mayor is pulling double duty as IT Director tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I get some more time on the clock.
Oh, absolutely, don't worry, ma'am.
Lori, the clock's not for you.
Thank you. But anyway, as I was saying, so I started this today about 2:00, and in about an hour, I had about 20 signatures. Like I say, I haven't completed the whole neighborhood yet, but everybody is concerned about it, and they're willing to step in. One of the ladies, which is a victim, also signed it for me. She's at home with her, the back, you know, her vertebrae is really bad, so we're going through a whole lot to get my yard repaired again, which I'm not worried about that part. Everybody was okay, nobody died, but it's just the fact that they run through the stop signs like it's nothing. And one young lady, my husband stands out there, he put his hands up at her, she hits the gas even harder, like it's a game, it's like some type of game. But the police department did come out, they did put red flashing lights, it didn't work. And I was just walking along, was that Wilbright and, Wilbright and Seacrest, where the 7-Eleven, I see that they're doing construction there, and I noticed that they had a solar camera, and I was wanting to present if we can get solar cameras put on these stop signs so tickets can be issued, because it's really getting bad.
Thank you for bringing this to us, and you said First Street and 12th Avenue? Which one?
Southwest First Street and 12th Avenue. I've seen four accidents since I've been there, and I've been there four years, or every year I've seen an accident.
And so, yeah, I understand the Forest Hills neighborhood, they're just finishing up the, this whale project.
Right. Another thing, too, we have no speed signs, there's no speed sign, no 25 miles per hour, no 15 miles per hour. We have kids that walk to Forest Park, there is no crossing guards there, the sidewalk only goes a portion, and then the kids have to get off the actual sidewalk to cross the street and get back on another sidewalk, very dangerous. Then you have cars that are parked across the sidewalks. So it's really, it's really bad.
Okay, thank you, and I know that we are implementing a program with some of our ARP funds to, what is the tagline, Lori? Drive safe, Boynton. And so, thank you for coming here, thank you for, I would ask you to leave the list with our city clerk.
Leave this, and I'll come to the next meeting, Ray, more?
If you'd like.
Yes.
Absolutely. And so that will mean it will be a part of the record. Our city engineer and interim Public Works Director will speak to you about the program and see where you are on the list for drive safe, Boynton, because it's not just your area, and we got a lot of work to do because we have a lot of municipal roads in the city of Boynton.
Ma'am, can you repeat your name again?
Sarah Parish.
Parish, Ms. Parish, you know, I appreciate you just bringing attention and awareness to this, and this isn't something that's new. We've been talking about Southwest 13th, Southwest 12th, and how those two roads right there, especially when people try to use it as like a cut-through, when they don't want to wait at the light on Wilbright. So it's a big problem, and, you know, it, we've been discussing this for years on how to improve it and how to fix it, and we've done a couple of things, but there's still more to do, obviously, so this isn't not on our radar. So I just want you to know that, Ms. Parish, and that we've been working on it, we've been discussing it, and we have more things to implement to keep fixing the problem there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Gary Mareska. I am, I live in Dos Lagos in Boynton Beach. I'm also owner of GM Construction, Inc., and Dave Beasley had asked me to come over and at least say a few words. My business has been located within the city limits for almost 30 years. What's happening with the building department is people or plan reviewers are interpreting these codes and ordinances to the extreme, and they're actually creating a hardship for the owners and a hardship for the contractors. On the contracting side, I don't work in Boynton Beach because I can't have men sit around and wait for permits that, it is true, that take two, three, and four months. On the client's side, they hire unlicensed people because when you explain to them what it takes, how much it will cost, they can't afford it. And there has to be a balance of some, something or somehow. You have, we have a Palm Beach, Town of Palm Beach inspector who has rental properties here, who wants to put a fence up. His father used to be working the building department. Not only does he need a permit, but because it's a rental property, even though he's extremely qualified as a threshold inspector, he has to hire a general contractor and also get engineering, and you can't find engineering for the fencing at Home Depot. These are some of the extreme instances that the people in plan review of the building department are actually controlling the entire building department and also driving the bus. They're not letting the inspectors take and look at what's out there, and they're not going out there and seeing, they're asking the architects, the builders, to document all this information that really is not necessary or can be checked in the field. Case in point, we have a repair on one wall, it took two months to get a permit, the, one of your inspectors says, "Oh, it's okay, but we, tell me about your smoke detectors, but we're not touching electrical, but you need to comply with the electrical code." Yes, it's in the book, but why can't the inspector, at the time of inspecting, look at it? The building department insisted I get an electrician, an electric, draw out the entire home for one repair, show all the smoke detectors and get a permit. That's why builders don't want to work in Boynton Beach, because there is no liaison, there's nobody that can, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I understand, and this is something that I've heard from multiple people, that sometimes the city loses the original drawing, or doesn't have the original drawing, and then the homeowner or the contractor needs to create a drawing of what is actually there for the city. And it's something that we need to have the workshop because we have a lot of new homeowners, and, you know, we don't want the mentality that, "Let's not get the permit and build anyway." Sorry, sir, you can't speak from the audience? Sorry, sir.
Wait till you get to the microphone.
I've never done this before. The plan reviewers need to understand that in the first chapter of the building code, when it comes to, it says, "The laws that were in existence at the time of the building completed shall be permitted to comply with the provisions of the laws in existence at the time the original building was such permitted." But in their foregrasping reach, they, well, is the egress okay? Is this okay? Is zoning's okay? And I get, I understand it, but it goes so far beyond the actual codes and the intent of building, and this is what the people that are sitting behind desks doing to the contractors and the owners. "I can't afford to build here. They don't want me, they want the unlicensed guys."
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment on this because this is something I've been working with staff profusely on for the last few months and years, really, because we have all sat here and listened to developers, building, general contractors, all types of people come before us and tell us, and, you know, personally, I've experienced some of these difficulties. So it is not, it is not something that we're not aware of. We've internally discussed what the problems are, and it's, one, it's lack of actual plans reviewers that are not, that are in-house, where we're having to contract with outside entities to review our plans, and then that causes that bottleneck effect where you're having one person who tells you this, and then you have another contractor who comes from somewhere else, and they tell you that, and then they're not connecting or communicating with each other, so then it becomes a complete, just running around in circles game. And I get your frustration, trust me, both of you who are here who are talking to us tonight, I get your frustration, and we've implemented a system that now will try to at least take the permitting process for some of our more important, not more important, but more frequent permitting processes, such as fence permits, pool permits. We've tried to, we're in the process of implementing a system that helps kind of take a little bit of that human aspect into it and kind of more streamlines it, so we're hoping to see some improvement from that, and we are working to do a couple more things. So I'm probably not being as eloquent as I could be, maybe somebody from staff can hit it better on the head, but we are well aware of these problems, is what I'm trying to tell you tonight. We are working to fix them, and in addition to that, we're also doing things like being willing to sit down and have this workshop, because I think that workshop will be a very instrumental and eye-opening resource to really talk with the people who are on the ground, like you, and the people who are at the desks, like some of the people that we contract with, and bring them together and have a meeting of the minds and try to figure out what are some of the parts that we can iron out to streamline the process and make it easier. Because I understand it, I get it, you're absolutely right. Sometimes what's on paper or what's at the computer does not compute, and it does not make sense when you're actually implementing it on the ground, and that disconnect has to stop. And so, you know, let me apologize to you guys on the behalf of, sometimes government just doesn't get it right, and this is one of those moments, this is one of those moments that should not impede your way of life, nor should it prevent you from being able to do business within the city of Boynton Beach, because we are a business-friendly community, we do not ever want to have a situation where people are saying, "Forget it, just throw my hands up, I can't work here." So we're going to do our best to work with you all to fix that, we already are, and we're going to keep doing our best to make things better moving forward. So we ask you for a little bit of patience, a little bit, and we're going to work through it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Is there anyone online that has their hand raised or is asking a question?
No, Mayor Grant, this is John McNally, I checked, and there are no additional speakers at this time.
Now we will close public audience, and we will move on to administrative review and approve proposed agenda for Art Advisory Board Agenda Workshop.
Hello, my name is Glenn Weiss, I am the Public Art Manager. As you may recall, the dialogue regarding the Public Art Workshop, Proposed Workshop to meet- the dialogue regarding the Public Art Workshop, Proposed Workshop, uh, two meetings back. And so we have, the Arts Board did at its last meeting, their first meeting in this room, which they loved meeting in, I have to say, um, to, uh, and one of the discussion items of what would be on that workshop, and then also their proposed date for when the workshop would happen, which is Saturday, August 21st at 10:00 a.m. here in City Hall. We're not quite sure which room that would take place in. Um, uh, and so, and we did structure the agenda so that it complies directly with the recommendation the authorities granted, um, the Arts Board in the ordinance. So there are three, uh, three simple items to address some, uh, examination of the current programs through these, through these mechanizations and make proposals, uh, to you as recommendations.
So I want to thank you, uh, for what you're doing. I'm excited to, to hear of the, the recommendations, um, because we normally don't have the advisory boards come up to the meetings and present to us, and it's been too long since that has happened. Um, I'm mostly looking forward to the, the education of public art and how do we plan to educate not just our children, but the adults as well?
Definitely very important to several of the members of the committee.
I'm also looking forward to the third agenda item, which is the communication participation, especially by diverse communities. I definitely want to see more inclusion in our art and our artists that we are curating from.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Weiss. Uh, I, I support the proposed agenda here. I do have a question regarding item two. It says, "Evaluation and recommended proposals for those events." Um, could you elaborate what they mean by evaluation? Are we, are they evaluating financial sustainability of these events? Are they, what, 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 what are they evaluating exactly?
Um, I think they are looking at the full roundness of those particular events, especially the kinetic, and then the interim year, which happens, which is the Avenue of the Arts, which is on Ocean Avenue. Um, and so, and I think they are both, you know, is that the, it, would they recommend to you that that is a way that they would spend their, spend the city's art, art and public places fund money, um, in terms of the event, but also how was it successful, um, in the last time it happened? Who did it benefit? How did it benefit the city? Um, what, what are the ways in which it is a gift to the city and to the citizens, um, here today?
Excellent. Those are the same questions I would have, so.
Yes, please.
I'm moved.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Our pleasure. Ratify the selection of Julie Mondello as the chair and Betty Pierce Rowe as the vice chair of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to advisory board appointments, we have one alternate available on our Art Advisory Board, two regulars and two alternates available on our Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, one alternate on our Education and Youth Advisory Board, one regular and one alternate on our Historic Resources Preservation Board, one alternate on our Recreation and Parks Board, one regular on our Senior Advisory Board. Uh, for this new item, uh, D trip to, mayor's trip to Washington, DC, last Thursday, I guess I forgot to mention on my disclosures, I was at the Box Gallery for the press conference, uh, for the community showing support, uh, for the self-determination of Cubans in Cuba, that, uh, the regime that is over there, um, allows for elections. And so part of the, the call was to have local elected officials go up to Washington, DC and help lobby and petition the federal government and Congress to help our neighbors to the South. Um, and so with that, I spoke with Congresswoman Frankel, who is on Subcommittee for Foreign Affairs, and I'm meeting with, uh, her assistant, Bradley, and he, I will hopefully bring back lots of information of what our federal government is doing. Um, in addition, we have our sister city in La Caia, Haiti. Um, and I believe, uh, the current, uh, acting prime minister has requested, uh, US troops and I would, you know, for their next election. And so I'd want to make sure that we encourage and promote self-determination, uh, in the Western Hemisphere. Uh, the last aspect is, is that I did receive, um, an email from the Recognize Government of Venezuela, um, who are, are looking for locations to help with the new TPS, uh, matters for Venezuelans. Uh, TPS stands for Temporary Protected, um,
Status.
Status, thank you. I was going to say service, but that didn't make sense. Um, and so that is something that, uh, I, I think we should put on a future agenda to help, um, people that are here, um, who are looking to become, who are looking to be here legally to encourage that. Um, and so I'm not asking for any money, but I do would, uh, request the, um, the consent of the commission for me to travel as the, the mayor of Boynton Beach, uh, to DC.
And Mayor, just to clarify, you are going there in a lobbying capacity to support the people of Cuba and Haiti, is that?
Correct. Originally, I, I was just going to visit family, but since I got the day there on Friday, um, I'm going to stop off, uh, at Capitol from Reagan National and, um, do what I can to help promote, uh, self-determination, uh, throughout the Western Hemisphere.
So it's more of a data gathering, not a position of this board?
Correct. It is in the sense that, um, when I have gone to other international locations such as our sister cities, I wanted to go as the mayor of Boynton Beach, and so that is, uh, the request for tonight.
I don't have a problem with it.
I support it as well.
Mayor, I, I, I don't support it. Um, simply, I'm sorry, it's, it's a little personal. Um, simply because, you know, I, I, I'm sorry. Give me a second.
All right. Um, I, I do need a motion.
We just want to reiterate, you are going there to obtain information and to come back to us and give a presentation?
Correct. I have a meeting with the Lois Frankels', uh, assistant there, Bradley. Uh, I forget his last name. It starts with an S. And as I mentioned, to help, uh, the Cubans in Cubans, Cuba, the Haitians in Haiti, and Venezuelans in Venezuela, because, you know, we have family members here in the city of Boynton Beach, and seeing the stories on social media, hearing the stories in the news of what's going on, um, I think that as a democracy, uh, you know, that we are promoting, uh, we should help countries that need that assistance. I understand that this is not necessarily within the, the job title as mayor, and so that's why I'm asking the permission to go as mayor. Otherwise, you know, I can still just go as Stephen Grant, uh, there.
Mayor, thank you for just giving me a second to collect myself. Um, in my personal opinion, I would prefer that you go as Stephen Grant, not as the mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, simply because this is a very contentious issue for several people. Um, I personally would tell you that I do not support US troops being on Haitian soil. So I cannot stand and say that I would support you going to Washington, DC to lobby for that, wearing the title of mayor of Boynton Beach. So I'm going to personally decline, um, your request.
And, you know, I didn't say that for the, the nations of Cuba and Venezuela because I do know that it is a very sensitive subject of sending US troops over there. And I do believe the Biden administration has sent troops to protect the embassy. Um, you know, it is something that, you know, I was listening to what that administration was requesting. And, you know, from my trip in Haiti, I, I saw the, the national police, I saw the military that is there, and, uh, the, the, when I was in Haiti, there is assistance that is needed. And whether it is troops or not troops, I, I will still be lobbying for assistance for Haiti, um, after the assassination of their prime minister. President?
The president was assassinated, not the prime minister.
So it is your determination whether to make a motion or not. Um, but, you know, that is my belief that trying to lobby our federal government for the, the assistance. In addition, to help with, um, the infrastructure bills, there is two, I believe, that are going on, the Build Back Better, and to bring back infrastructure to our city. Uh, I've spoke with, uh, Congresswoman Frankel about that. Um, and the other thing, and to make sure that we are understanding of how to specially use our ARP funds. So I'm sorry for upsetting you.
Oh, no, no, don't, no need to apologize. I, no need. Um, I, I would be in favor of you going as the mayor of Boynton Beach as long as it is not to take a side or to make a, um, particular stance on any international affairs that do not fall within the purview of the city of Boynton Beach. Um, you know, I, I, I think it's good and well that, you know, the US, if they so choose, can provide aid. Um, but again, there is a very, it's, it's, it's history, and having US troops on Haitian soil, a sovereign nation, it's, it's, there's a lot there. There's a lot to unpack there. And so I cannot take the position as this, as a city commissioner to say that you should go and lobby for that, um, in that regard. But if you're lobbying for other things that are relevant to the city of Boynton Beach, please, yes, absolutely, go in your capacity as the mayor of Boynton Beach because that only benefits our residents. But anything internationally related should not be under the purview of that. Thank you.
And so I, I'm understanding of the, the will of the commission. So yes, I, I, I accept the, the limitation.
So Mayor, to be absolutely clear, you are going as our mayor in an informational capacity to bring back suggestions or proposals of how we could be helpful from, from, from the city level?
Correct.
Not necessarily to take a particular position in Washington.
Absolutely. So.
But did I not hear you say you're going to be lobbying for?
So I say what I would like to do. However, that is not something I'm, I've done. And so this is something that I did speak with, uh, Felicia from, uh, Congresswoman Frankel's office regarding US aid, which is in Haiti, which doesn't take sides. And so I think it is informational to bring back what the federal government is planning to do, uh, to the, the countries in the, the South, as the main purpose would be to help the people in that country obtain self-determination. Uh, because as I'm aware that, you know, there has not been an election in Haiti for a while, and that is something that was supposed to be planned. So I am, I thank you for your input and letting me know that, I know that US soldiers should not go to any other countries, um, that they should not, should not go to. So thank you for that input. So I do need a motion, though.
Motion, uh, for a mayor to travel to, to Washington, DC as our representative.
For informational
For informational purposes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda for, is it, would a commission like to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over 100,000. Seeing no discussion, may I have a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed ordinance 21-023.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Article 3 of Chapter 18 of the Boynton Beach Code of Ordinance is entitled Municipal Police Officers Retirement Trust Fund, amending Section 18169, requirements for retirement benefit amounts, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion from the public? Is there any discussion from the audience online? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Heng?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Penzergan?
Yes.
Bodis Foro?
Uh, our city manager's report, uh, utility director Joseph Paterniti will give a brief presentation on utilities 2020 water quality report. And see online?
Here I am. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, commissioners. This is Joe Paterniti, utility director. I'm happy to say we did make the July 20th meeting. Um, I have a brief presentation this evening on the 2020 Water Quality Report and Backflow Prevention Cross Connection Control. Next slide, please. John, thank you. Uh, the utility publishes the Water Quality Report, also known as Consumer Confidence Report annually. It is distributed to all our water customers. The report includes information on the source of our drinking water, the treatment processes used, and it describes how the utility meets the regulatory standards for drinking water quality. Also presents water quality monitoring results. In addition, the report provides educational information on potential contaminants and the related health effects. Next slide, please. Additional information provided for the benefit of all our customers includes a listing shown here. We provide, uh, utility services and charges. Uh, we identify our stormwater management program, blood mitigation and resilience planning. We talk about reclaimed water and water conservation. This year, we put in the, uh, information regarding the irrigation restrictions that were implemented, uh, recently. And then we have information in there on the energy rebate program. Next slide, please. Um, backflow prevention and cross connection control are regulated by Florida statute and the Florida Administrative Code. The rule outlines the types of potable water service connections that require backflow devices. I'm happy to say Boynton Beach Utility meets the requirements of the rule, and we provide an annual report to the Department of Environmental Protection, um, that shows that. Um, our backflow prevention devices are owned by our utility customers, and are placed on the customer's side of the water meter. The utility requires annual testing for backflow prevention devices. We send notices to customers annually, uh, to remind them to provide that information for us. If we do not receive that information from the customer, we have a consultant or a contractor that goes out and tests it for us. We backcharge each of the customers for that. Next slide, please. Here's listings.
I have a question.
Okay.
Can you go back to the last slide? This backflow device thing, honestly, this is the first time I'm ever hearing about this. Sorry if it was more common knowledge, but are we supposed to know how to test it? Are homeowners supposed to know how to test it?
It's not, doesn't apply to residential.
Oh.
So it's, it's businesses. So it just, it's a device that you put on that doesn't allow if there's, is waters coming in from our system, that there's going to drop, that it doesn't let anything get sucked back into our system. So that device stops that. So it's, it's not required on residential.
So it's more for commercial or large?
Yeah. And it goes through their BTR with their occupational license renewals, then we, we track it through that system.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for clarifying, clarifying that.
Yeah. And this slide shows the customers and the connections that require these backflow devices. Commercial industrial properties, multifamily development with a master meter, uh, fire, uh, service mains require it, as well as irrigation meters, uh, for potable irrigation, yeah, use potable water for irrigation, and then taller buildings with over five stories are required. And that ends my presentation.
I should have just read that last slide. Okay. My bad. I should have just read that last slide. Okay, my bad.
Vice Mayor, I had that, one or two meetings ago about some of the issues that surrounding cities have had recently, and it was related to the backflow prevention. So we wanted to assure the commission, we, we do have a system in place and it is tracked and monitored and inspected annually to make sure these devices are appropriately working in our businesses and the communities requiring it.
Good to know.
Right. And I just wanted to say that, good job. It answers a lot of my questions. Sometime in the past, we used to consider the idea of selling Boynton Beach water. Would you say based on what we have in place, you would still hold to that?
Oh, we have the best water in South Florida.
No, I, I heard that officially.
Excellent water, water quality. We have a great aquifer and.
Great. Would you explain what, what problems the other cities were having? And, and kind of layman's term and, and the Reader's Digest version? And what we're doing to prevent it here in Boynton? You know, you, you, you answered the question, but just, just for the audience who may not know about the other cities that were having problems and getting into trouble, would you kind of go through that a little bit for the benefit of everyone?
Certainly, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Again, I'm not exactly sure what some of the problems other cities have. But what my understanding is that they, Delray specifically, was using irrigation, providing reclaimed water to residential homes. And I believe there was a cross connection that went undetected in a residential development. And that's kind of where that, that started. And that's pretty much the limits of what I can say that I know about.
So what are we doing for cross contamination?
Well, that one, I believe it was an illegal, it was an illegal cross connection. So the city was not aware, yeah, at that. And I don't, wouldn't recommend we start opining on what happened there because we honestly don't have the details of the, the full scope of what, what, what occurred. But we do have a backflow prevention program in place, as does Delray and all of those cities. By law, they have to.
Good.
I think that was unique circumstances there.
How often do we inspect those 30 production wall wells tested?
Well, we, we have the, an annual inspection process on that. We just rehabilitated three of them in the Western Well Field, and they're back online. So we have a regular program that, that looks at our wells and makes sure they're operating efficiently.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And so Joe Oido and also to the city staff, you know, I make sure to bring my reusable water container. So please don't provide me with the, the water from Publix because we don't know where that comes from or Niagara.
Safer.
And so I noticed that we have the water bottle filler outside our chambers. Is it possible, not everybody would, you know, wants to use the water fountain because of, you know, our new understanding of communal diseases? Is it possible to get recyclable, recycled cups or compostable cups for the chamber so that we can be a little bit more sustainable and stop using plastic water bottles for the future? Yes.
Mayor, I have a question for Joe regarding these black backflow devices. I seen your PowerPoint, you say the city requires annual test reports. Given their significance, you know, is this something that, that we do? Are the tests or the inspections performed by us or require these property owners to produce these results? I'm just trying to figure out if, you know, is this voluntary self-reporting? And they find their own company who does the test? Or how does that work, Joe? I just want to make sure there's some sort of sanitization in the process and that there is some sort of accountability in the review of all this.
Yeah, very good question, Commissioner. Utility has a database that we list all of our backflow devices in the city. And like I mentioned, the backflow devices are on the customer's side of the meter. So they are required to hire a plumber and provide the test results to us on an annual basis. And if they don't, we have our own plumber that we hire and go out and do the testing. So they're tested annually and we keep track of that in our database.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Is there any further questions regarding the water quality in Boynton Beach? Seeing none, we will move on to new business. Consider rescheduling the September 7, 2021 City Commission meeting to September 8 to allow the regular meeting and budget adoption hearing to take place in one meeting and consider canceling the December 20, 2021 City Commission meeting. I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed resolution number 21-085. Prove and authorize the city managers to sign a grant agreement with Florida Atlantic University to provide for the creation, development and operation of an economic development hub within the city hall innovation space to accelerate technology development and incubate startup companies.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. David Scott, Director of Economic Development and Strategy for the city of Boynton Beach. Mayor, I'd ask that this presentation that we're about to present to you today will cover not only this item, item 11B, but it also covers 11C, which is the commercial lease agreement for the vendor as well.
Let me read that into the record. Excuse me. Proposed resolution 21-086. Prove and authorize the city managers to sign a commercial lease agreement with Florida Atlantic University to provide for the creation, development and operation of an economic development hub within the city hall innovation space to accelerate technology development and incubate startup companies.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited and very glad and honored to bring these items forward to the commission. It's been a long time coming. This commission is asked the Department of Economic Development to really foster an environment and ecosystem for our small businesses. As we know, the city of Boynton Beach is about 88, we're a city of small businesses. About 80% of our businesses are considered small businesses. So we really want to incubate not only those small businesses, but we look to incubate startups and entrepreneurs as well. And the city commission has set aside spaces within city hall, we call our innovation space. In, in its wisdom and forward thinking, has proved this, set aside this space to bring in an operator to incubate small businesses and startups. So through a process, and we will turn this over to the team to present, we actually went out and sought a operator to operate that space. We identified that operator and we used a competitive process through Averson Young, each, under the auspices and direction of E2L to identify that vendor. We looked at best practices and we saw then and recognized that a university has been very successful in operating these types of systems. And we didn't want to be too confining as to what that program looked like. Additionally, the commission has directed the department to set aside $50,000 to contribute towards programming for that space. And specifically Commissioner Romulus wanted to make sure that money was specifically built, set aside for programming and not for build out. And so that's what that, that's agreement will, will do as well. So the grant agreement before you sets aside and establishes the process, well, the conditions by which the city will transfer $50,000 or contribute $50,000 towards the operator, in this case being FAU. The second item is for the leasing of the city hall space to FAU to provide that service. So we have a team of people here, a great, grand team of people. And I'm proud to, to say they all came out for, not me, but for you as the commission and the citizens of the city of Boynton Beach. So first of all, the great Kelly Heffron is here with E2L. And then Mark.
Just Mark?
Just Mark. That's how, that's how he told me I had to introduce this, Kelly and then Mark. But Mark Heffron as well with E2L. And then I'm sure they will introduce the, the rest of the team. And also online, if John McNally will unmute. Keith O'Donnell is online as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark and Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor, Commission, City Manager. Kelly Heffron, managing partner, E2L Holdings.
And Mark. This, I was checking my photos and I realized a year ago tomorrow, we will have dedicated this building and the chambers. And I know back many, many years ago, we discussed what the city hall should be. And I believe it's become everything that we had dreamed of, except it was missing a couple of things, which was our incubator tenant. The city came to us and we discussed how we would occupy or get a tenant for this space. And then we were the vehicle that worked with Averson Young, who's been a great, great partner through a pandemic, I might add. Not the best time to be out trying to bring tenants into a space. But they tirelessly, working with the CRA, with the city staff and obviously with the commission, were able to interview and put out an RFP that ended up in a resulting award that we hope you will approve this evening to FAU. I can't say enough for Keith, who's going to be joining us by Zoom. Five years with us, not easy. Kelly's got 37, so you can vouch for that. But we kept to it and we, we stayed with the purpose. And having seen what's already happened in Town Square and coming from a very innovative technology environment. I worked in Research Triangle for 13 years. I saw four universities that really brought in the labor, brought in the training, brought in the resources that ultimately grew Raleigh, North Carolina, which has now become what many believe is the next Silicon Valley. So I think we have that same opportunity in Boynton. We're not, they're here to be Silicon Valley, but we are here to grow the city in a way that no surrounding cities can because you've got one of the best partners that you could ever have in the city hall. So with that, I'm going to turn this over. We have Danielle Vanette here with Averson Young. If you'll raise your hand, I'm not sure if Keith will have her speaking, but he's joining us by Zoom. And with that, Keith, I hope you can hear us and your PowerPoint is up.
I think I'm unmuted. I'm muted. This is Keith O'Donnell, Averson Young. I thank you, Mark and Kelly. And, and, and thank you to Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and of course, the Boynton Beach citizens for giving us this honor to work on your behalf. Yes, for the past five years, relocating you west, and you endured that beautifully. And then, of course, you know, during the pandemic, I couldn't, can't even explain how awesome of a staff that you have, that we work strategize together. They helped me with tours. You know, I was able to recruit Danielle from Brick down in Boca Raton. Because of the success of the city hall, I mean, you know, she, she really, you know, brought that project off Yamato Row, the former IBM project into what it is today. So I was able to recruit her. And then we were able to, to, you know, convince FAU to give us a strong look. Now, I, I've been working with the research park down there for 15 years. Saw seven years ago, Tech Runway come out of the university to its own building in the research park and then blossom. I mean, the, the programs, the board that they have with, with Connor Lynch and leadership backed by, of course, Dr. Kelly, Dr. Flynn. You know, and the success, the graduates that have come out of there, Modernizing Medicine, Mobile Help, Ship Monk has really populated South County and North Broward, creating thousands of jobs. And then there's spinoff jobs and prosperity from it. And they have a really strong focus on working with the local community and startup just dreams and ideas. And they know how to structurally, they have the SBA. I mean, I'll let them tell you all about it because they're better at than I am. But again, it's been an honor working with your staff. And, and, and also, it's just been a great project. So I'm honored and I'm also more honored now to introduce the leadership from FAU. I don't know who's going to speak, but we have Dr. Karen Scarpino, my, my good friend, Constance Scott, and then Jessica Beaver. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you again.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jessica Beaver. I'm the Associate Director of FAU Tech Runway. I want to thank you all for having us and for this opportunity. I see our slide up, so if we can just move the slide along, that will help my presentation.
If it's easier for you to stand on the other side, you're more than welcome.
Okay. So I won't take too, too much time here. Tech Runway was founded in 2014, as Keith mentioned. We are here to educate, instruct, provide support, services, mentorship, space for entrepreneurs and early-stage startups. And if you look at our slide here, in under seven years, these are the numbers we've pumped out. We have raised over 100. Our companies have actually brought in over 278 million in revenue. They have raised over 133 million in capital, 120 patent applications, over 642 jobs, internships, the numbers go on and on. And this is really in six years, and these are all local companies. These are students, faculty, community members who show up with prototypes. They might just come in with an idea, and that's where we come in to help. So this space here is just amazing. This community is amazing. And us giving the opportunity to come in, we're going to provide that support, that guidance, those resources. We have community partners with the SBDC that can provide workforce development. We have all the connections at the university. And we're also partnering with community members such as Tech Hub South Florida and other, other members of the community. And I'm excited to also partner with Boynton companies. I've already had some calls with some local ones that have reached out. And we're just here to help the community create jobs, provide support for those interested in entrepreneurship and building and scaling their businesses with the end goal of them setting roots in Boynton. Because you have some amazing resources, you have some amazing locations. And let's get them here and let's move them into those brick and mortar locations. So Constance, do you want to add anything?
That's, thank you very much. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Lori, it's a pleasure, City Attorney. This is a very exciting opportunity for Florida Atlantic University and for Tech Runway. It means so much to the university to be able to embrace another municipality and support them and work with them to do job creation, to create internships and mostly to create businesses. That's what we do. We are a university that is your university. It is from Harbor Branch all the way down to, to Dana Beach. And we are, we are the workforce, we are the future. We're organic growth. We want to educate and keep them here. But what Tech Runway has done and a couple of figures that I wrote down in addition, over 199 internships. And we've applied for 120 patents and been very, very successful. Florida Atlantic University has 27,000 students in this area. We have students that are coming from Boynton Beach. We want them to get educated and then we want them to come back to their communities and be successful and find jobs. And you can tell by what Dorothy Jackson is, they can also afford to live here, which is really something to be very, very proud of. We're proud of this relationship. We have built a relationship in Boca. We have expanded a relationship up in Jupiter with the help of the county. So your assistance with funding, we can assure you, will be a very rewarding opportunity for this entire wonderful flourishing community. And we're, we're very excited about it.
Now, I'm extremely excited about this. You know, having a university in Boynton, someone in our. Now, I'm extremely excited about this, you know, having a university in Boynton, someone in our, one of our residents has been clamming for this for a long time.
Oh, you, if I recall, Mayor.
Which one that is?
Hundred-story.
Yeah. So, no, I'm very excited. This is something that, you know, with, you know, the, the history of Boynton Beach, you know, I'm very excited about the workforce development because that is something you are within our CRA district. And so we want to do what we can to partner with you to help redevelop the locations that we have available to redevelop. We have many vacant retail locations that we want to find tenants for. So this is something that is very exciting that we can work with you to, to build that better Boynton Beach. So thank you for coming to us and believing in us as well.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor, and I will share with you as well. We, depending on the classifications, as, as we continue to grow and expand, the potential for using CDBG dollars for the program work that we do is also available. So that might also be a very good tie-in for some of the CRA district businesses. Thank you again.
And Commissioner Pinzerga?
Yes, I'm, I'm almost speechless. As many of you know, I am a proud alumni of FAU. So not only am I just so excited for you guys to, to be part of our city, but this is also kind of like a full circle moment for me. And you guys are coming to my home. I went to FAU for many years and it has changed my life. And I'm so excited for you guys to be here because you're going to do that to so many more people. So for now, I just want to ask you this question, and that is, what is the plan exactly as to how you'll use the space? Is that something to be developed over time or do you see a particular vision already as to how this space will be used and integrated to all of your existing programs? What can we see, for example?
That's a really great question. I've been thinking about that for quite a few months and working with the team here. It's going to be in my mind right now. We might tweak it as we continue conversations, but it'll be a hybrid space. For the most part, it'll be a location for entrepreneurs to incubate. You're right in the middle of the county, which is amazing. So, you know, entrepreneurs from north, south, east, west can come here. You know, we want to focus on the local community, but we also want to give that opportunity to some of the companies to come and introduce themselves to Boynton and everything you have. So modular workspace, tables with wheels during the day, you know, normal nine to five, maybe it's just, it's open for entrepreneurs. We'll have staff, we'll have SBDC consultants in the space working. And then in the evenings, you know, I can't give it a number of times, but in the evenings, the space can be reutilized for workshops, seminars, maybe small events. And then outside of that, in this beautiful new building and the surrounding areas, networking events, larger skill events. We have mentor cadre of 75-plus mentors. Let's bring them here. Let's introduce them to this community and what you have here. So that's kind of how we're envisioning it and that's just going to implement our program and what we provide as well. It's, it's, this is such a great setup and a great setting. It's going to be so easy just to transition what we're doing and bring it to this location.
This city hall is magnificent.
Oh, it's stunning.
It's, it's just off the charts amazing. You really need to host a League of Cities event here so that you can make all of us jealous and all of the other municipalities. It's really very special. And I do want to say how nice it is to see all of you. It's been a long pandemic and it's great to finally be out. We look forward to, to that opportunity, but we also do venture capital events. And I think that that will be a great opportunity as well as to, to launch a venture capital event here where the actual investors have an opportunity to see this community, see this magnificent building and see how this community is just really charged and evolving into an amazing, amazing central hub for Palm Beach County.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. I did forget to mention that we do have our own investor angel group. It's the first university-based investor or angel group in the entire state of Florida. And so this would be one of the locations where we would host those meetings. We do that, I think about six times a year. So we would look to bring those investors here as well as those companies obviously pitching and host them in this location as well.
Excellent.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I wanted to say that I too am an alumni of FAU, all right? And I, I'm just excited about this, just like you. I, I do want to ask that, I've heard from many of the organizations locally here in Boynton. And that's one of the pet peeves. It's incubator, getting into entrepreneurship, all that good stuff. Have you talked with or planned to talk with some of those local organizations to get their input on what they would like to see? And maybe, you know, make it part of, complement what you're doing?
So I've started to have some conversations. I actually have a couple of calls later this week with some businesses that are local here, just to start picking their brain and see what they're looking for and how we might be able to collaborate, partner, provide support, resources. But that is something, once we kind of, once we get the ball really rolling down this hill, that's, that's, that's going to be number one. Pulling in the SBDC, working with them and in this community and us all going out, like you said, and really reaching out to those local business owners, the smaller businesses and seeing what their needs are. Because, you know, you can't be a one-size-fits-all, but if we can provide support of some capacity to the majority, that, that's the goal. And it could be as simple as access to interns. Maybe we can offset interns. So, you know, they, they need someone specialized. Maybe I can find some funding through Tech Runway, the program, possibly the grant, if that's allowable, and say, we're, you know, we can help you find help, give you that support and we'll offset that cost. And the goal or the hope would be maybe that intern turns into an actual employee and we've just created a job. So the short answer is yes, that's, that's what we'll look to do. And I am open, or we all are open to more discussions, direction and guidance from, you know, the council here.
Before we go into further, motion to approve.
Wait, wait, wait.
Further discussion, with further discussion.
I know you're excited, Vice Mayor. So am I, so am I. Thank you. May I proceed?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I do want to give you kudos because I see you rocking the royal blue, the FAU blue. And you remind me of Dr. Ava Parker, who's always rocking her panther green. So kudos to that. I, I, I see you, girl.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I definitely am owl in.
Yes, you are. And since everybody wants to claim their owl pride up here, I am not an owl, but my husband is. So go Owls. I'm a lifetime hurricane. But school and stuff aside, I do have a few questions. Just for clarity, the businesses you incubate, the businesses that you incubate, who maintains the ownership of those businesses?
The businesses do. We do not take any equity. These are not our businesses. All we do is provide the resources and support for them to continue building their businesses and to scale them. So when they come in, it is their company, it's under, they're registered. We just, we hold their hand and say, here are all of these amazing resources. Here's mentors, here's connections, here's networks. And then it's kind of one of those, now you're free. Now go grow. But we're always there. Like, once you're in Tech Runway or part of our, our program, you really never leave. We still work and help and support and provide tickets and guidance and mentoring and credits to companies that have graduated seven years ago. You know, Scott Adams is on our board. Dan Cain and Modernizing Medicine is still very involved. Because once they graduate and they scale, then they can come back and potentially help other entrepreneurs. But we take nothing. It is that entrepreneur's company and yeah, it's all theirs.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that. I already knew the answer. I just wanted to make sure that it was very clearly stated because it's, this is going to take some education for our community to know who you guys are, what you do, the services that you offer. And I think that's one piece that's very key to, to put out there. My second question, when do you launch?
In this location or just in general? I think we're working out the kinks, but I believe October 1st is the date that we had put. And that just gives us a little bit of a buffer to really plan things out and try to hopefully get the space, you know, set up and give you guys a plan.
Okay. And then my last question, how would one apply?
So for the Tech Runway program itself, we open applications in January. We will obviously be promoting that and pushing that out to the community here. But for this location, there's the program, but then there's also the, the community as a whole. We can only take in a limited amount and there's obviously about 25 to 30 companies a year. However, having this location, having the grant funding and all of our current partnerships, we are planning on offering to the community educational instruction, access to consultants, introductions to capital through grants, possibly investors. So we're going to be creating opportunities. So there's the program. And then there's also Tech Runway, the incubator, the supporter of early-stage startups and entrepreneurs.
Oh, so just clarify for me.
So there's
Does it start here?
Okay, so, so once we move in and we get everything squared away, our, the, the plan right now is to put out to the community and I'm still working with the Adams Center of Entrepreneurship and some of our partners. We possibly start with an entrepreneurship bootcamp and we put that out to the community only, just to get them in. And that'll, I believe, is a four to six-week course. Then there's also putting out the word that we have consultants and opportunities for those small businesses who just want to get in and start receiving those benefits and resources. So the idea is to start rolling this out as soon as we get in, but we just need to kind of finalize the plan.
And so your next cohort potentially of Tech Runway would probably start January of next year?
The cohort would open up in, applications open in January and then we go on the university schedule. So it kicks off in July, but that's the internal small cohort. But, you know, we're, we're exploring possibly having a cohort for Boynton. But the idea in our mind is to provide as much support and resource, the resources to the community at large versus just a limited amount for a year. So, yeah, so there's two, two types.
Two-pronged.
Yeah, there's two, two ways to go. So it's keep you going, keep you motivated. And then when you, you know, then you can keep, apply, but you're already going, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, I love that. Thank you. That ends my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Pinzerga?
Mayor, I just have a comment, not so much a question, maybe might be a question, but a comment. Because of your experience and the success stories that you've come out with, that you, from the Boca campus, you guys are uniquely situated to obtain information from all of these success stories, right? You've been with these companies through their journey. And one of my questions is, and this is really a good place for us to interface in terms of building policy or economic development. What are they saying about what needs to be improved in terms of local environment, local business environment? That is a conversation I would love to hear. That might be something you're already doing internally. But who would know better than all of these people have gone through this experience and has, you know, from five group, five people company to, to 100 people company, that's an invaluable resource. And so we should leverage that and learn from what they're saying and hopefully take that in to build some policy for the city.
I, I agree. I would love to find some time to sit down and dig in deep because we do, we do poll and we do, you know, try to pull that information. I will say the number one, the number one piece, and this is in the state of Florida, I think, is access to capital. That's the hardest part, early stage. You know, you're not talking, we'll use modernizing medicine. Investors are just knocking down their doors, trying to invest and get in. But when you have somebody that has a prototype and they're looking to raise funds, that's difficult. But that's where we can come in with our investor network, introductions to grants, grant funding.
Exposure, exposure, exposure to, to people who have other connections that can introduce them and can recognize. Shipmunk ended up getting purchased by Office Depot and, and they were two years old at the time. And so things happen and it has a lot to do with the fact that these businesses are talking to one another. They're all in the same place in terms of not knowing very much and they're learning it all at the same time, but they have an idea. They have a concept and they have trained mentors. They have people from Florida Power and Light, some of the best corporations that are in Palm Beach County and, and even Broward County. Our program, our Tech Runway program, we just launched it this past year in Jupiter.
Yes.
And it has doubled in size and doubled in terms of money that we have received from the county. No, I guess it's three years now.
Yeah.
Because it was a three-year grant and now we're, we've, we're recurring dollars because it's been so successful. So we're expecting that same thing to happen in Boynton, only, only more exciting because there's just, we, there's so much more we could add on to it because of the holistic approach, because of the fact that you're a part of the Boca Raton Chamber. I've served on the, I'm the Chairman of the Economic Development Committee for the Boynton and the Boca Chamber of Commerce. So we're going to draw all of that wealth of information in those, some of those successful businesses that are in the chamber need to be helping these smaller businesses get their start, get their kick.
Excellent. Thank you. And so as I was researching economic development funding, I went to Enterprise Florida and they had this other resources about Flora FAU. It said, Florida Atlantic University Center for Urban Environmental Solutions, the Department of Urban and Regional Planning and the Institute of Government at FAU are working together on a project to assist communities resolve urban and environmental issues in order to redevelop and revitalize Southeast Florida. So I'm very excited of partnering with FAU, to partner with Enterprise Florida, to really make the, the difference. And so any way that, you know, we as a municipality with our 800 employees, our, you know, 14 different departments can work with FAU, I'm very excited for. In addition, I see there's a football game coming up on October 2nd. So we are putting our, our racial and equity study team against our new innovation space. And so similar to what we had, I think in 2019, when we went to FAU, we had the, the bus have a tailgate party. I'd like to see if we can't implement that as well to get more people aware of Tech Runway here in Boynton Beach, so.
Well, I, I think that's just a marvelous idea and our former coach, Howard Schnellenberger, we are dedicating, he passed away a couple of months ago, and we are dedicating the entire year to him and his successes at Florida Atlantic University, at the University of Miami, at the University of Louisville. And so it will be an entire celebration and I will make sure that you are all included on that invitation list.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm there for September 10th. And so I already got my invite. And so look forward to, to working with your, you know, the staff at the stadium so that we can plan a nice tailgate for October 2nd.
Okay, I'll write that down right now. And I'm on the committee for the September 10th event, so I'll be looking for all of you there.
All right, thank you. And so we have a motion to second. David?
I'll second. I don't think we seconded.
Okay, yes.
Oh, I just wanted to say one thing. You have great friends that answer the phone. So between Jessica and Constance, this has been a great partnership, but there's one more person here that didn't get introduced that always answers my call. Jonathan Porges is here from the chamber. So Jonathan, I just wanted to recognize you. And then I don't know if you wanted to say a few words?
So, so my thunder. Good evening, everyone. Jonathan Porges with the Boca Boynton Chamber of Commerce. And we're very excited about the space and the, and the partnership with FAU. You know, the chamber has had a long partnership with FAU for many, many years. And so we're excited to do that and we are excited to offer some of our services to the, the businesses in that, in that incubator space, whether that's networking, educational resources, stuff that Constance has already mentioned. So we are very excited about it and we're excited to be moving business forward in Boynton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote on 85 and 86 individually?
Yes.
So motion to approve R21-85.
Second.
Saying no further discussion? Hold on. Is there anyone online? Do not see.
Yeah, Grant, this is John McNally. Yeah, I don't see anybody either.
All those in favor, oh, someone just raised their hand and then put it down. Never mind. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Motion to approve R21-86.
Second.
Saying no further discussion? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. I have a Nick Gray had her hand raised. Ms. Gray?
Not that the support is needed, but I wanted to let you know that I have been a consultant with the SBDC for the past year and I have a significant number of clients that I've been assisting in the Boynton Beach, in the Boynton Beach area. And the SBDC is a partner program of the Tech Runway. So they do come with a significant number of collaboration, deep, uh, experience in capacity building, but they also come with a face you already know.
A beautiful one at that.
Thank you.
So, congratulations, okay?
All right. Next is discussion, commission interest and authorized travel to the National League of Cities City Summit in Salt Lake City, Utah on November eighteenth to the twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Attendees can participate in person or virtually.
Mayor would like to attend.
Bitter.
All right, well, are we extending delegation this time? Yeah. So, no, I, I also would like to attend, um, I think, what is it? And, you know, I saw the, you know, the outline of, um, Salt Lake City, it's a little bit different than, uh, San Antonio. So we'll see what works best. You know, I'm also in favor if there's Airbnbs that, uh, are, might work out better. I'm also would be in favor of that, so, um.
We do have funding in the Commission's business meeting, uh, budget to attend the National League of Cities Summit. So you, you have, and I would include Commissioner Katz, I guess, when you have your motion, just, and I could check with him to see if he plans to attend, but.
Right. I, I, we've never really done Airbnbs before. We've always done hotels, so it would be that we would.
It would be a personal choice.
Right.
Are you?
I understand saying we would do it, and then the city would reimburse. How would that work?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just asking, because we've never done that.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, I did that, uh, when I went to Los Angeles. There was like, you know, a nice little Airbnb right outside the, the convention center. And so did that because the hotels in LA were quite expensive. All right, so a motion to approve, um. Thank you.
Second.
Saying no further discussion. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Uh, legal, propose resolution twenty-one dash zero eight-seven. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with the City of Delray Beach for Lake Idaho water quality, quality sampling.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Do we have a, do we need a discussion?
Can I just get a brief overview of what this is? From staff or anybody?
Uh, I think there are.
I know this is part of our, um, stormwater maintenance permit, our MPDES permit, but I don't know if Joe's still, he should be on the line.
I'm here. I didn't hear the question though, sorry.
What is this resolution doing?
This resolution, I'm sorry, this resolution is for, uh, water quality sampling within the Lake Idaho for the, um, TMDLs that are identified there that we're, uh, assisting the, the state in, uh, identifying those TMDLs.
Joe, we don't know what TMDLs stand for.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. It's a total maximum. Uh, gosh.
Daily limit.
Yeah, thank you.
So this is dealing with stormwater, how much Lake Idaho can hold before overflowing into the, the neighbors?
It's not, no, it's basically water quality parameters, not necessarily volume.
Okay.
What's in the stormwater that's getting into these water bodies?
Total maximum daily load.
Yes, correct. Thank you. I had a senior moment there, sorry.
Okay. And so this is the only, uh, lake that the, the City of Boynton Beach is doing.
Right.
Yeah, and it's both in, I guess, Boynton and Delray, so.
But I can, I can expand on that. So as a part of the city's, uh, participation in NPDS program, it's a countywide program. An MS four permits issued to thirty-eight municipalities. This is a requirement for us to do sampling in this water body. So since it's a joint project with City of Delray, Delray Beach, that's what this is for, the sharing of the costs.
And what are the anticipated costs?
Yeah, that is, sir.
Give me a second. I'll look it up in the agenda item here.
Thirty-three thousand dollars, or is that? Yeah, so it should not exceed thirty-three thousand dollars. My only concern is that if we, you know, there's, there's Lazy Lake, there's Lake Boynton, and there's, uh, other areas along the E four canal. If there's excess funding, you know, I, I kind of, this is different than what the water utility is doing to test the, the current makeup of the freshwater system. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. This is totally separate, based on what Andrew was saying about the MPDS permit. This is definitely.
And I guess then what is the, the, the effect if we determine that there's too much pollutants going into the lake?
That's, that's up to the permitting agency. There may be some requirements to do some, um, non-point source treatment of the stormwater entering the water bodies. And we can argue definitely that that's not, this water body is connected to a lot more, um, input than just Boynton Beach and, and Delray. So we're, we're basically collecting the information for the state, for this permit.
And so this is something where all of the, the Lake Worth drainage districts, canals that go into the, the South Florida Water Management Districts canals, we're not doing a heavy test of where the pollutants are coming from. We're just seeing how much accumulate in the lake.
That's correct, yes. We're, we're reporting that information.
All right. Sounds good. All right, well, hopefully we can figure out a, a solution to reduce the pollutants.
Yes.
All right. And I believe we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, Mayor Grant, this is John McNally. You do have a resident, uh, with their hand up? If you'd like, uh, Ms. Annette Gray, I'm unmuting your microphone.
No, it was up from the time before. Sorry.
Oh, my apologies. Okay.
All right. Okay. Crystal, do we have a first and second on this resolution?
Please, um, state who's giving the motion and second.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Second, I'll second it.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Uh, proposed ordinance number twenty-one dash zero-two-four. First reading amending the city's candidate qualifying dates to be from noon on the second Tuesday in November to noon on the fourth Tuesday in November.
Question. So we're pushing it back? I thought we were bringing it up.
I thought we were bringing it forward.
Yeah.
That, I, Crystal, get the city clerk. That would actually be moving it forward. So it would normally be the fourth Tuesday in January of next year to the second Tuesday in, in, um, February. So we're moving it up to this November. Uh, on the time supervisor election.
That's a period of time.
I guess you guys just have it mistyped then in the agenda because it says second Tuesday in November to fourth Tuesday in November. Correct. And it would normally be this, uh, in February of next year. So we're moving it up closer to us than November, this coming November.
I think I understand the confusion, Commissioner.
Yep.
This is a time window from.
It's a typo in the agenda. I think it's a typo in the agenda. Because you're saying February, but it says November on the agenda. We're, we're asking for it to be moved from.
Jim, I think you need to read the ordinance.
Yeah, the, the ordinance, um, might help if I just jump to that. But it, we are moving it earlier. It will occur earlier, will open earlier and close earlier than we currently do it at the request of the supervisor.
I see what you're saying, is that this is the, the period to qualify.
That's what I meant, window.
Yes.
Fine. So it's an ordinance to the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, establishing qualifying dates for the March twenty-twenty-two general municipal election in accordance with the direction of the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And the first whereas clause does address that it would, the qualifying would be including, starting and including, uh, the second Tuesday in January and no later than the second Tuesday in February. Yeah, those are the old dates. That's what the, that's what the charter currently provides. We're allowed under state statute to amend the charter by ordinance. So we are moving them up to, um, to the earlier dates.
Okay, so moving forward, it will be starting at noon on the second Tuesday in November to the fourth Tuesday in November.
Right.
Okay, my bad, I think I was misreading it.
Exactly. It's just those, yeah.
I got it now.
Yep.
So moved. And it'll be like this permanently?
Uh, we've only provided for this election.
Okay.
And if we wanted to change it, we would need to come back and do it permanently.
But can we just do that in the, can we do that in the second reading to make it permanent?
Just check the title. Um, we could do that.
Because I know that whenever there's a.
No, no, Mayor, we, we can't do that because the ordinance provides for qualifying dates for the March twenty-twenty-two election.
Okay.
So that limits it. We can't, we cannot amend the title on second reading.
Okay, that was the resolution.
So if we wanted to do that, because I think the point that the mayor was about to say is that when the election falls on presidential election years, we do have to move the qualifying date anyway. Yeah, so can we just bring back this ordinance, or do we need to do this now?
I think we have time to table it this time, yeah. Crystal's been in contact with the supervisor of election on the timing that's necessary. So we could, um, we could bring it back for first reading next time and provide that it's, um, a going, it, it would apply to all future elections.
I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so may I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Uh, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And so we'll do the, the resolution at that same time?
That, yes.
All right, and so I did want to bring up to, um, the city commission's attention, you know, the, the different polling locations. You know, for District One, there's nine locations for fifteen precincts. For District Two, there's seven locations for eight precincts. District Three, there's six locations for ten precincts. And for District Four, there are six locations for ten precincts. I believe we're going to redistrict. Is that correct, Jim or Crystal? For this next upcoming election?
The redistricting will not affect this coming election, and when I be done in time.
Okay. And so the, the main thing that I have is that when we have the polling locations at schools, it affects the kids. And so I would want to request, uh, clarification from the supervisor of elections that we can have any of our polling locations open to any of the residents. Because let's say someone works in District Two, but they live in District Three, they could go to their polling location where they work in District Two to vote for the mayor in District Three, rather than them having to go to their home base. In addition, you know, looking that there are polling locations that are doubled up, um, and we do not have a county or state or federal election to help pay for the costs, my goal would be to use the money for, um, locations that are in schools for early voting. And so that's kind of where, you know, the, the fact that we have polling locations in Freedom Shores and Citrus Cove, I would want to say, you know, moving those precincts to Fire Station Three or Boynton Lakes North Clubhouse, which is a half-mile distance or a mile distance away, so that we are saving money and we can have, use that money for early voting on the weekends. That's kind, and, and so, Crystal, you have a response?
Yes, um, instituting early voting for our city would increase our election cost from approximately a hundred thousand for March to two hundred and fifty thousand.
I know, uh, so do we have to have it for nine days? Okay, so that's the definition of early voting?
And it would only be for the EZL Hester Center anyway for early voting.
Correct. So that, that's kind of where I was hoping that we didn't need to do it for nine full days. But if you're saying early voting needs to happen for nine full days to have early voting, it becomes a little cost prohibitive.
Yes, and just to take notice, really not taking away an opportunity for residents who want to vote that can't show up in person on Election Day. Just given the statistics of how people vote, um, with the, um, about fifty thousand, uh, fifty thousand registered voters in the city, only for the presidential pri- primary, about seventeen hundred voted, early voting versus, uh, fifteen thousand people vote by mail. So it's really, um, the, not an effective cost if we were to really push early voting versus just.
Mail-in ballots.
Mail-in ballots, yes.
And so the, the caveat is, is that we used to have a mail-in ballot drop-off in the city, is that correct?
Correct.
And we cannot have that now because we don't have an early voting location.
You can have, um, drop-off.
Hester Center, right?
We can have a mail-in ballot drop-off box manned, or I'm sorry, attended by someone from the supervisor of election?
Yes.
And it only can function during the hours of, that the EZL Center would be open for those early voting hours? That's, is that what I understood from the rules?
Yes.
So basically, the mail, mail-in ballot box could be open throughout the time of early voting from seven to seven?
Yes, and I'll confirm that with the supervisor of elections office.
So we don't need to have early voting to have a mail-in ballot box?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was confused. I thought you needed to have early voting for that mail-in ballot box. And then also, uh, can our residents put it into the supervisor of elections in Delray Beach?
Yes, any of the supervisor elections offices that are open to them.
For a second, um, the conversation that, which you just mentioned, that I thought, I thought the box does only, or can only be put where early voting sites are. Am I misunderstanding that?
So I, I'd like to get clarification of the new rules for next meeting. Because we did hear that the, the rules have changed.
Okay.
And, uh, I think that's very informative of what, because we're not going to have early voting because I don't think it's cost prohibitive to have nine days early voting just for the, the City of Boynton Beach. And then the, the comment in regards to having universal, um, polling, is that a possibility?
No, because they are determined by where people live. And so they have to stick to their own polling location.
Okay, because that's different than early voting.
Right.
All right, and then we cannot group, group certain precincts together?
It would be a change in staffing. Um, and depending on how many people are in that precinct, if it works for a location, you want to make sure you accommodate for whoever may be able to come to that meeting, not to overburden that polling location. So we can see what changes could possibly be made, but, um, the group precincts is normally not.
Well, I mean, yeah, right. So I mean, there's three different precincts at Christ Fellowship Church versus, you know, one precinct at Freedom Shores. And so that's based upon the number of people in the precinct?
The number of people in the distance, and the supervisor of elections office sets those precincts, to account for the registered voters in those precincts in the distance. They would need to travel and. to account for the registered voters in those precincts in the distance. They would need to travel and different factors like that.
But we, so this, we cannot change the polling locations for precincts?
It's possible, depending on what's there. We would need to accommodate for cost of notifying those residents. We can look into specific.
Certain mail-in.
Right, because we'd have to give them a whole new card.
We would have to issue new cards, or just, you know, post to those locations that your polling location is moved and give them advance notice about any changes.
Right, because I know that in 2016, there was a norovirus that closed Freedom Shores or Citrus Cove, and everyone was part, you know, voting at Boynton Beach High School. So, so that's kind of my mentality is, is that we'll see what we can do to not have the polling locations in schools, if it makes sense.
I, I would agree with that. I, I've always felt a little iffy about people coming into schools to vote, especially when we choose to not close schools on election days. It's always been something that doesn't sit well with me. So yeah, if we can find ways to find other avenues or other places where people can vote without having to be at those schools, or if Palm Beach County School District would just decide to shut schools down during election days, I don't know, something.
Whatever we do, we need to move expeditiously because last 2016 was a lot of confusion. People didn't know where to go. And some were saying, well, it's changed over here, and some was saying, no, it's not changed. So we need to be mindful of that and make sure we don't add additional confusion by last minute changes. I'm all for it, trying to not disturb the kids. But, you know, it's printed on those cards on where they are to go to vote. And that would have to come from the Supervisor of Elections Office in enough time so people could be educated on where to go.
And, and that's kind of where I like, you know, doing it now, not a week of, is, it makes sense. And I think, you know, if we can eliminate the disruption to schools, I think that's a win.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I, I thank you, Mayor, and I commend you for just trying to think outside the box and still doing things to help make voting accessible, especially as our legislation continues to just wreak havoc on those rights. So, thank you.
All right, and so future agenda items, I do have a couple of things to go on there. One would be the Building Department Workshop.
Yes, and just a reminder, Mayor, if you recall during the budget workshops when Adam presented that, that is an identified initiative that they've already addressed and planned to be doing outreach workshops. So it falls right in line with what was already in the works. And we will, I'll work with Adam to get a, a date of when they plan on doing their first one and look forward to that outreach.
And so that's, that's kind of, we'll have it as a TBD until we get the date. The, the second thing is that on my Monday meeting, I did get to speak with County Administrator Verdina Baker. And the second policy issue that we had was annexation. And I'd like to know how the, the commission feels about annexation for the purpose of septic to sewer. Currently, there is a lot of available funding on a federal, state, and county basis for septic to sewer. And we can make this very simple for the, the environment by having a legislative local bill to move forward. However, the, the deadline is approaching for these types of local bills. So is it possible to have the discussion at our August third meeting? I believe that's, is that correct?
Yes, you're right.
To have a discussion regarding a local bill for annexation and which area would make sense? What comes to mind is the Nichols Boulevard.
I would definitely be in agreement with that, Mayor.
Likewise.
We, I believe it's Representative Casello is the, the state representative in that district. So let's reach out to him as well, along with Lori Berman.
And Mayor, I would also invite, or at least just to have a preliminary discussion with Representative, can't think of his name right now. He's my representative, District 90, Crusoe, thank you. Yeah, I know he's a big proponent of getting septic to sewer made. And, and I know we have some barrier islands which are part of his districts that he represents that may fall into that. Even if it's not annexation per se, but perhaps maybe utility annexation, they could work with us to kind of get them from septic to sewer.
Thank you. I'm very happy to hear that. I'm all for using the, the funds available for this septic to sewer conversion. You know, I spoke with elected officials in Marathon, and it's like, it's a big pill to swallow if you're doing it all yourself. The fact that we have federal, state, county, and local funding available. You know, everybody chips in, that's 20% of the cost of the twenty thousand versus the, the whole twenty thousand.
Mayor, is your interest in the local bill to address annexation and city boundaries versus, we don't, I mean, the grants we won't need a, a bill for, we'll have access to apply. So is that, I'm not clear?
So it's in the, the purview that the grants aren't going to last forever. So we can't apply for the grants techni, you know, without the, without having the, the ability to do it. And so with the, the legislature's help, the city will have the ability to apply for their grants and implement septic to sewer conversion.
Are you concerned because they're not within the city boundaries? So then that'll, all right, we'll take a look at the, the grant rules. So I think, do you understand, we're talking about more on the annexation side of it?
Okay.
We're working on a process to link water service, which we can do outside the jurisdictional limits, with mandatory sewer connection when, when it is available. Been working with staff for about six months or longer on that issue as well. And that would be the kind of language that we would look for in a local act.
All right. Okay, so anything else regarding future agenda?
Mayor, no, nothing to add to the agenda, but just a comment which would be directed towards David. I know that SBDC is giving out a lot of funding right now to help educate especially minority communities about entrepreneurship. Don't know if you're aware of that, but just something to look into. I don't know if, if a city or municipal would be eligible to receive those funds to do that work, but just something to look into and, and explore. I, I know John and you guys do a lot of work in educating the community about entrepreneurship and business development. So this could just be another avenue for us to pick up some revenue while we still do what we already do anyway. Thank you.
There's no further discussions or comments. John, can you provide us with the closing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Grant. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the City of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the City of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending the City of Boynton Beach's Commission Meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.